Because you've all come out on time, and so I would like to call the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, July 28, 2014, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon, Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Polika and supported by Piana. Any discussion? Sherilyn, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business is presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. The first one I would like to read, it was actually introduced by Councilman Lennon, who's not here this evening, and so I would like to read the resolution of condolence for Kenneth Murphy. And it goes as follows: At a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held on the 28th day of July, 2014, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends to cities condolences to the family of Kenneth Murphy. Kenneth Murphy was a longtime Ferndale resident and passed away on July 7, 2014. Kenneth Murphy will be missed by many, but especially by his mother Florence, siblings Patrick, Michael, Peggy, Tim, twin brother Dennis, Noreen, Mary, the Department of Public Works employee Terry, Tom, Brian, Katie, 29 nieces and nephews, and one grand niece. Kenneth Murphy was a credit to his family and to this community, and it is with sorrow that we mourn his loss. That was adopted unanimously this evening. Thank you. Our next presentation this evening is a presentation on Redevelopment Ready Communities Report, and I believe some folks from the MEDC are here, and Derek Delacorte is there.
Michelle.
Oh, Michelle, I'm sorry. Michelle Foster is going to introduce this item for the city. Thanks, Michelle.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Michelle Foster, planner for the City of Ferndale. One of my first projects that I worked on coming back as staff for the City of Ferndale was the Redevelopment Ready Community Program. It was a program developed to create best practices, statewide standards, and predictability for investors and business owners within the city regarding city development processes. So my task was to create some documents coming in midway through the program process to address some of the criteria that we were not meeting for the program, and to create these documents to become certified as a redevelopment-ready community. So we developed a guide to development, which is posted on the city's website. It is beneficial for developers and business owners within the city to help navigate the processes of the city. We created a public participation plan, which has already been beneficial in helping inform our 360 Project Communication Plan. We've also created some redevelopment-ready site-specific marketing materials, which helps to market industrial sites, other sites that are ready for redevelopment. So after submitting these documents to the MEDC, they reevaluate the city and their standings based on the criteria for the program, and they found that Ferndale is on our way to becoming redevelopment-ready. However, we still do have seven recommendations from the MEDC to meet before we can become certified. The majority of those will be addressed in our upcoming master plan update process. But overall, the program has already been beneficial in just bringing awareness and reflection to our city development processes. But with that, I'm going to introduce Michelle Parkin, who will kind of go over the program detail and their evaluation findings in greater detail.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us to present on the report of findings. As Michelle mentioned, the RRC program is a certification program that supports community revitalization and the attraction and retention of businesses, entrepreneurs, and talent throughout Michigan. In 2007, 2008, Ferndale was evaluated under the Michigan Suburbs Alliance RRC program, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation recognized the program as a valuable resource to all Michigan communities, and acquired the RRC program in 2011. Communities that had previously been evaluated under the MSA program were welcomed into the statewide program. Just to recap the RRC process, typically, a kickoff presentation is held in each community outlining roles and responsibilities for both the MEDC and the community. The kickoff presentation was declined in Ferndale. Best practice trainings were offered to staff, and we conducted the evaluation over the fall of 2013. And as Michelle mentioned, we had evaluated the city and then spoke with city staff and reevaluated based on items that were completed. The report of findings was completed this spring, and was finalized in June of 2014. The basic tool that we use for the evaluations are the RRC best practices. These six standards were developed in conjunction with public and private sector experts, and they address key elements of community and economic development. A community must demonstrate that all best practice criteria are being met in order to be certified. We don't have any certified communities at the moment, but we do have two communities that are ready for certification. Measurement of a community to the best practices is completed through the RRC team's research, meeting observations, stakeholder interviews, as well as seeking consulting advice from the RRC Advisory Council. Community's degree of attainment is visually represented in the report, like a scorecard. So green indicates the best practice component is being met, yellow indicates the best practice component might be in place, but additional action is required, and red indicates the best practice component is not present or outdated. Ferndale did not receive any red in the report and is well on the way to receiving RRC certification. So over the next several slides, we will review some of the areas where Ferndale has excelled, and then some areas where work still needs to be done. Best Practice 1 evaluates community plans and public outreach. It evaluates community planning and how a community's redevelopment vision is embedded within the master plan, capital improvements plan, downtown development plan, and corridor plan. It also assesses how well the community identifies stakeholders and engages them, not only during the master planning process, but on a continual basis. And Ferndale completed a master plan update in 2008, but the plan is no longer in compliance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. The city is preparing an update, which will focus on the creation of additional mixed-use areas, increasing density, improving walkability, and enhancing the transportation system. The city's recently adopted Six-Year Capital Improvements Plan will help to implement the vision of the master plan and downtown development plan. And Ferndale is very proactive in soliciting public input for plans and projects. City staff has developed a public participation plan outlining best practices for engaging stakeholders. The plan highlights a strong culture of community involvement and will assist Ferndale with maintaining a high level of public engagement. Best Practice 2.1 evaluates zoning regulations to determine how well they regulate for the goals of the master plan. And Ferndale is all green for this item. The zoning ordinance is readily available online, and use matrices have been developed to present regulations in a simple and straightforward manner. Best Practice 3 covers the development review process. 3.1 evaluates the city's site plan review policies, project tracking, and the availability of development information. Best Practice 3.2 evaluates the community's site plan review procedures and how well the community provides internal and external communications. Documents related to development are readily available on the city's website. Planning staff has also developed a user-friendly guide to development that Michelle talked about that provides an overview of the development process, as well as contact information, forms, and checklists, so they can be accessed at any time, whether the city offices are open or not. City staff is available to discuss conceptual development project details free of charge, and staff follows a streamlined documented internal site plan review process. Developers are clearly encouraged to seek stakeholder input at the onset of the development process, as exhibited by the recent 360 Project public input sessions. Best Practice 4 assesses how a community encourages and tracks training for elected and appointed officials and staff. Best Practice 4.2 evaluates how a community conducts recruitment and orientation for newly-appointed or elected officials and board members. Tracking training is a useful way to identify future training needs by documenting the education that's been received, identifying gaps, and then determining what training should be focused on in the future. Ferndale does not formally track individual training needs at this time, and a simple training mechanism should be developed just to log training. Ferndale has developed an excellent application for open positions and a detailed overview of the role of all boards and commissions, and those are all posted online. Best Practice 5 is the redevelopment-ready sites. We assess how a community identifies, visions, and markets their priority redevelopment sites. This is where Ferndale has a little bit of work to do. Ferndale has identified targeted sub-areas and three priority sites for redevelopment, but the city must outline a vision for each of those sites and identify information that a developer would need to pursue a project on each site, and bundle the materials into a property information package. With the future master plan update, the city has a prime opportunity to solicit stakeholder input to create the redevelopment vision for each site. And for certification, the city must package at least one site and actively market that redevelopment site. The City of Roseville has developed a property information package for a targeted mixed-use redevelopment site, just as an example. Best Practice 6 covers community prosperity. So we're evaluating what goals and actions a community has identified to strengthen its overall economic health, and evaluating how the community promotes and markets itself. The city has adopted economic development strategies as part of that 2008 master plan to support future economic prosperity and long-term fiscal competitiveness. There is an opportunity during the future master plan update to create a unified economic development strategy for Ferndale that connects overall city goals with the capital improvements plan, as well as DDA strategic plan and goals. And 6.2, marketing and promotion. While the DDA has created a strategic marketing plan for downtown Ferndale and recently released an RFP to improve the website and increase engagement, the city and DDA should coordinate their marketing and promotion efforts and create a unified strategy to enhance Ferndale's image as a desirable place to live, work, and invest. So next steps. We ask that the governing body adopt a resolution of support to proceed with the RRC program within the next 30 days. This is a buy-in checkpoint to ensure that the city will continue to work to implement the actions needed to become certified. We also ask that the city submit quarterly progress reports, so the RRC team can document progress made over the quarter. Once the city has met all of the best practice criteria, Ferndale will be a certified redevelopment-ready community.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of council? I guess my first question is, in the action steps, you need us to adopt that this evening?
No, just within the next 30 days.
Within the next 30 days, okay. Are there questions of Michelle? I'm sorry.
Yes, Michelle. Well, if I may take this opportunity to kind of set up a framework of my reference to this program, so people know where I'm coming from and my role in redevelopment-ready communities. For those who don't know, I worked at the Michigan Suburbs Alliance for nine years, and redevelopment-ready communities was a project that I led for those nine years. And the Suburbs Alliance, the Board of Directors of the Suburbs Alliance chose to redirect the program over to Michigan Economic Development Corporation in 2011. And I consulted with MEDC for a year to transition everything out of my brain over to them. And I departed the Suburbs Alliance in May of 2013 to pursue other opportunities. So I've been disconnected from this program at an operational level for over a year and a half. But I'm very happy and proud that we are at this point for the City of Ferndale. I lament that it took us so long to get here, but I see a way forward, and I'm really glad that you are here presenting what we're succeeding at and where we can proceed to capitalize on the opportunities that are in front of us. So just to give you an example, and I want to let people know that this has been on the forefront of my mind for years since I got elected, but some of the green items in here are what we have been working on since I got elected. And I just wanted to sort of toot my own horn, because this is how important this program has been for communities like Ferndale, who are the older suburban communities who need to reinvest in their economic development practices in order to attract new investment and residents into their communities. This is about financial survival and growing our communities for people and having a great quality of life. So just a couple of examples. I wrote the first redevelopment-ready communities evaluation, and one of the recommendations in there was to hire an economic development director. Voila, we have Derek Delacorte, who's our economic development director. It said redo our website, so people understand the clear way to get development done in the community, and it took a while, but we got our website launched last year, thanks to Joe. So these are sites that we set up early on, and City Council has been tediously working on making sure that we fulfill some of these items in the RRC report. The one item that we did not get green on, on redevelopment-ready sites, this was a new area that the whole program was trying to encourage cities to do, and this is the area that most cities struggle to become green, because it is very different from the typical planning process that cities have been following for the last three or four decades. And so this innovative program is pulling cities forward to try to do something different, to leverage the real estate market in their community to drive investment. And so I look forward for the planning department to really work with the appropriate stakeholders to fulfill some of those obligations. And my first question is about marketing the community and working with the chamber, the DDA. Can you explain a little bit more about that best practice and what you're looking for the city to advance on?
We're looking for coordinated strategies, so utilizing those partner agencies where everyone is working toward a similar goal. So relying on the chamber, as well as the DDA, to help market the city, all in the same way, so you're all sharing a similar message, a cohesive message. So we're not looking, you don't necessarily have to adopt a formal marketing plan, but we'd like to see some strategies developed that intertwine all of those different agencies.
May I ask a quick follow-up question? You've mentioned Roseville with marketing pieces, but who does that well?
Who does that well? I would say as far as marketing a site.
Marketing a site between three independent entities, the DDA, a chamber, and the city.
I think the City of Ypsilanti has done a really great job, even though development hasn't really followed through on that site yet. But the Water Street Development, they have a website dedicated to that site for redevelopment purposes with all of the necessary documents. They've got the vision. I think that they've done an excellent job marketing that site.
And that engaged all the entities in a coordinated.
All the different stakeholders were involved.
Okay.
This is one of the out-of-the-box products that we're asking, the program asks cities to do, because typically it has never been done before of consolidating your site-market information about what type of development you would like there, so that when the development proposal came into the community, people were on board with what was supposed to be, what has been proposed by a developer.
Right. It's more of a proactive approach rather than reacting to a development proposal. When you have a vision in place and you've already engaged stakeholders and combined all of that available development information into a package, developers are reacting to what you're proposing rather than you reacting to a development proposal.
Thank you.
I understand that it takes a lot of time to go through this whole process and for a community like Ferndale to become green. Originally, I think in 2007, there were six cities that were the original participants in the program. Out of those six, you said that two are currently ready. Is that correct?
It's not necessarily out of those six. We haven't made the announcement yet, so we're not able to publicly announce who is ready.
Oh, that's fine.
We're having video problems, you can just throw it out.
It's not necessarily out of that initial group.
Okay.
Just to give some information, when the Suburbs Alliance transferred the program over to the state, communities that were certified under the old program requirements were given the opportunity to participate early on in the program and work with MEDC as they transformed and evolved the program. And so this is where Ferndale falls in, is one of the early adopters under the grant-driven redevelopment-ready communities program, which is why the Suburbs Alliance transferred it to the state, because it was grant-driven, and the state could provide financial resources behind it to leverage a broader set of communities than a tiny nonprofit could. So that's why the transfer was made. And Ferndale is one of those early communities that was given the opportunity, so.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
And Roseville was one of the early adopters.
Yes.
Or two. So they're going through the program, and Ypsilanti.
But Roseville hasn't been certified either.
No, no one has been certified, yet.
Beyond the, obviously, the benefits that were stated upfront about making it easier for people to conduct business with the city and those obvious benefits, but are there specific incentives or benefits that accrue from the state for being a certified program?
Yes. The MEDC will assist with marketing up to three of the packaged redevelopment sites. So we will do that through our website and through, we haven't quite determined how, but it will be marketed. And also, as far as MEDC and MISTHA programs, there is going to be a preference given to communities that are certified.
Thank you.
May I ask, you noted that one of the opportunities for us to be able to track training across all different kinds of entities, including governing bodies, but tracking is different then, is there a model curriculum you look for at each level of engagement? And if so, for example, what does a curriculum look like that you would look for, like a city council as a governing body to follow to?
We don't have a model curriculum developed. I would suggest perhaps looking at MML, or the Michigan Planning Association may have some training available or model recommendations. And as far as tracking goes, we really just look for a simple tracking method. Even an Excel spreadsheet works. And I think whatever meets the needs of your council.
So let me give a further example. One of the reasons this best practice was developed was because sometimes we have long-serving commissioners and board members, and practices and techniques in cities change. And so if you have a planning commissioner who has no idea what transit-oriented development is, and you're starting to pursue transit-oriented development in your master plan and going through your zoning ordinance, that you know that this is a priority knowledge area that your zoning board of appeals and planning commissioners should learn in order to understand those policies, so that they can be excellent recommendation providers to the city council, as an example.
Any other questions or comments?
Do you have a model resolution for cities at this point, or is this something that we should ask our planning director or economic development director to design for us, and we can approve at the next meeting?
We could provide a sample resolution.
Okay. And then to the city manager, or maybe this is to Derek, but what do you think the timeline is to finish the yellows to green for redevelopment-ready sites?
Right now, staff is, I think, has completed or is almost done with RFP for the master plan process, which we'll also be coordinating at the same time. This next year, our recreation master plan is up, so we're going to merge the two so that we can economies of scale, as well as get more input as relates to both of those master plans. So we figure that over the course of the next year, it'll probably take a good nine months to a year to finish that whole master plan and to do it right. And a lot of those, most of those yellows, from what I understand, will turn to green through that process.
Okay. And then specifically for 5.1 redevelopment-ready sites, that's part of the yellow areas, too. So that would be done in that nine-month process.
Yes, yeah, I mean, that'd be a big part of the master plan. Okay.
All set?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in and working with the City of Ferndale on this. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Our third presentation this evening is our Downtown Development Authority, and Chris Hughes is here from the DDA to tell us all the ladies and greatest, right?
Good evening. Yes, I am, council, mayor, everybody that is or isn't watching at home. So just to start off, we're already holiday hoofing it with a Christmas in July special. Register now for the second annual Extremely Awesome Holiday Hoof, and start saving for your holidays by getting our Screamin' Good registration deal at $40. Active.com for our Holiday Hoof event November 22. Yes, we're a little bit far out there, but that's how you get the good savings. And you have to hurry up, because the prices are going to go up in four days, eight hours, and 25 minutes, something like that. So anyway, Holiday Hoof is on our agenda and on our radar already, so register now. This Wednesday, we have FerNet, and here's a little pondering people might do. Ever wonder why when you walk into a store, you go to the right, or there's always a table in the middle to attract you? Well, those are the things that we're going to be talking about. That's called merchandising, and that will be the topic of our discussion this Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m. at the Boston Tea Room. We have an expert coming along, Paul Baylog of Detroit Display Company, and he's going to talk about merchandising your products so that you sell them, which is, of course, the name of the game. Once again, that's 9:00 a.m. Wednesday at the Boston Tea Room. It takes about one hour. We get you in and out, and you're on your way. Getting down to more business, we are happy to report a run of new businesses in town, which many of you have been to and attended. In the last few weeks, we have welcomed Dicky's Barbecue, the Greenleaf Bodywork opened their wellness center, Treasure Tobe, La Vida Massage, not to mention a few others that haven't had grand openings, like Pizza Hut, Jimmy John's, Verizon, they've been open for a while. But this Friday, August 1st, we have a grand opening of a very exciting place, Ambrew, at 5:00 p.m. over on Bester Street. That's Dean Box New Venture, where it's a very up-north experience here in Ferndale. In August, the coffee will begin brewing at Big B Coffee down on West Nine Mile. And in September, Detroit Bubble Tea will be opening. It's naturally flavored iced tea fusion that tastes like a smoothie, but it's lower in calories for those who are counting. On to other things. Things are going to start getting kind of funny around town in another week or so, and that's because the Detroit Improv Festival will start utilizing the venues that we have in town. Go Comedy, the Ringwall, Rust Belt Market, they're all part of the Detroit Improv Festival, which is putting Ferndale on the map as a funny place. So maybe we can put that into some marketing. The events are, you can get all the details at DetroitImprovFestival.org, because they've got all the details. It's a very extended schedule, so if you're interested in learning anything about being funny, might make a note of that, you might want to check that website. Other dates to remember, August 9th, it's the Green Cruise, about human power. August 14th, 15th, and 16th, who doesn't know, that's the Dream Cruise. And on August 21st, we're going to get real again with outdoor movies on Bester Street. This time, it'll feature the original Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. So woo-hoo on that. Finally, we ruffled a few feathers last week, in a good way, at downtown Ferndale and the DDA, when we went out back and discovered an arid green heron on the sidewalk. The poor little fellow was just standing there in the middle of total confusion, looked around. He didn't move, he didn't fly, he didn't even walk. So we called the Detroit Zoo. We were graciously accommodated by Bonnie Van Damme. I want to give a shout-out to Bonnie Van Damme, who is the associate curator of birds. There's another word there, but aviary. Anyway, Republic Parking helped us and transported the bird to the zoo, where he spent the night. And Ms. Van Damme reported that the next day, they transferred him to the Howold Nature Center, where he is expected, and we are hoping to hear of his complete and full recovery and his opportunity to fly the coop. So with that, all the details are downtownferndale.com. Check us out at the Downtown Ferndale Facebook page, and have a great couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Great story, too. Thank you. All right. That concludes our presentations. We have a public hearing this evening, and a public hearing on an amendment to the Parks and Recreation Plan to remove Saratoga Park. Derek, are you going to introduce that item?
I'd be glad to. Good evening. This item came up several months ago, actually, in evaluating several of the areas in the city, as far as existing parking issues or expansion or other things. city, as far as existing parking issues or expansion or other things. And Saratoga Park is located on East Saratoga, between Bonner and Farrow on the north side. It's a long, linear piece of ground, it's about, I think it's about 80 feet wide and a full block length long, that's currently utilized or identified in the city's Parks and Recreation Plan as a park. It does have a basketball court and a basketball hoop, it does have a park bench and a grill on it, but in reviewing the city's Parks and Rec Plan and discussing it with the recreation and the Parks Director, there was no programming for the park. And it is a piece of property that we looked at, that has the potential maybe to allow for, to release some of the parking issues that are existing in the industrial area over there, with some of the expansions that have taken place with some of the businesses. So we began to investigate the potential to delist that property and potentially use it for some other use, and brought that forward to the recreation director, and also brought it forward to the Parks and Rec Board, to discuss it with them as a potential option. Actually, much to our surprise, the farther we got into it, the more it seemed to gain support and momentum as a possible option, as a way, one, to resolve some of those issues in that area, and, two, if possible, if we were able to sell it, and we do not have a pre-arranged sale, or there's been no sale, you know, put together yet, potentially raise some money for some of the other park improvements that have been identified by the city. I think it's been no secret that council and the staff and the administration have been looking for all options to improve our parks and make some improvements based on both the Parks and Rec Plan and the mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee that identified park improvements across the city that need to be made. So we presented this as an idea to the Parks and Rec Board, and they had a pretty thorough discussion about the possibility of considering selling the park, or the piece of ground. At the end of the day, the Parks and Rec Board did make a motion and recommend that council delist the property from the Parks and Rec Plan, as much for the fact that there is really no programming identified for the park as for any other reason. The entire area and the immediate areas is surrounded by industrial uses. Even some of the residential that's close to the park or adjacent to the park is zoned industrial, so the residential uses even at this point are considered existing non-conforming uses. So at that point, we decided what the appropriate thing to do would be to bring it forward to the city council for consideration, as part of any amendment to a master plan or a Parks and Rec Plan. We've scheduled it for a public hearing, we've noticed all the residents and business owners within 300 feet, published it in the paper in accordance with the requirements for a public hearing. We did hear from one president, I don't know, Frank is still behind us, his family was instrumental in getting the basketball hoop incorporated into that area. It has a history of being on a private property and some other parkland, and then ultimately ending up on what is Saratoga Park. And in truth, it's something we didn't learn about until actually we were as part of this process. We've spoken to Frank, and I'm sure he'll take the opportunity to speak in the public hearing, but his biggest concern was that that basketball hoop be, continue to be identified with his family, and be reutilized at a park close by this one, which the Parks and Rec Commissioner, the Parks and Rec Board had the exact same concern, is that any sale of the park, the funds be used to make park improvements as close as possible to this park, and that, too, any of the existing equipment there be repurposed in other locations. So that is obviously a recommendation from staff and a commitment we're willing to make if council does decide to move forward with that. So that is the brief history of how we got to be here, and obviously, I'm, we're here to answer any questions. I know Jill from the recreation director is here to answer any questions, and would like to recommend that the park be decommissioned, I know that's been a word we've kind of joked about lately, but eliminated from the Parks and Rec Plan, and that any potential sale of it, the funds be used to make park improvements and other facilities that have more identified programming.
Okay, so with that, I would like to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on this item, and if so, feel free to step up to the mic and tell us who you are?
Oh, boy. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I got it put up because originally, that basket was at the dead end on Troy Street. You know where Troy Street dead ends?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there was a basket put up by the old baseball coach, okay? And I went and put a net up for the kids. At that time, there were at least 15 little kids playing, and I put up a net, and unfortunately, the next day, honest to God, they took it down, they took the whole, but I petitioned Byron, Tides, you know? Well, anyway, we got the basket put up. Now, I didn't do it just for the kids. My dad was also a baseball coach for 30 years, you know, he started baseball in Madison Heights. It's a personal thing for me, but it's really for the kids. I'd like to see the hoop and repurpose the equipment, move it over to Vestor and, what would that be, Farrow? And I have no problem at all, as long as that's done. I even wrote up a thing here, trying to get Derek and Michelle to sign and say, "Yeah, you're going to do it." How do I know you're going to do it? See, I mean, this is really personal, this happened. Did you guys get a copy of the article that went in the paper when that park was, when the basket hoop was actually put up? Did Michelle? It's not in our paper. Anyway.
How long ago was that, sir?
Thank you.
2000, I mean, it was like, I've been there for, I'm going to say 15 years approximately.
Yeah.
You know, I could get the exact thing. Just one second here. Well, anyway, you know, it details why I wanted it, it's for my dad, and I'd also like to include my uncle Wally, to tell you the truth, he coached hockey in Canada for 30 years too. So I just wanted to mention that it got put up, it'd be a shame to lose it, and please, if you could, move the basket over to Vestor and Farrow, you know? And it needs to be replaced anyway, the concrete foundation is cracked. And I might also mention, if you're thinking about putting a parking lot up there, you know the song, but there's a few people that have mentioned, who I talked to, like on the street and everything, once it becomes a private parking lot, they're worried about, you know, bad activities, you know? And I don't really want to mention all the bad things that have happened there, but, you know, where it is right now isn't a bad spot. But, you know, it'd be a shame to lose something we already have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else here this evening that would like to address council during this public hearing? Good evening, sir.
My name is John Vog, resident of 351 West Maplehurst. Been a resident for 41 years, and for most of that time, we've tried to get help to stop the amount of traffic that comes down our street, the speeds.
Let me just stop you there for one moment, because this isn't our general public comment, this is for comments specific to the possible delist of the park. We'll be next with public comment, okay, sir? All right, apologize, thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council on the item of the public hearing to amend the Parks and Recreation Plan? Dennis?
Dennis Augustin, 1550 Spencer. I can kind of agree with that gentleman back there about, you know, unsavory activities. Twenty-some years ago, stood up here with a bunch of people from my neighborhood, fighting for police presence in our neighborhood, okay, because we weren't seeing any. And we got it for quite a while, but now with the downtown developing the way it is, and a skeleton crew from the police department, we're not seeing the police, you know, there as much as we'd like to, like what we used to. We fought for, the people over there fought for, some are gone now, but we did fight for this, to get a police presence in our neighborhood. And for a while, Wanda Park was shut down. Now, I know that I'm walking a fine line here, because I'm a member of the Parks and Rec Board, but I still live there, okay? And I would really like to see more police presence over there if we're going to start doing this, and that guy's right, there's been a lot of unsavory activity over in that area there, and if it's going to create that, I would really like to see more police presence in there. And while we're at it, you know, if we're going to keep building up the downtown, then maybe we should see to it that we can get a couple more police officers on duty, you know? I'm sure those guys would love to see that, now. You know, they're probably enjoying the overtime, but it's taking its toll on them too. But, you know, like I said, it does, I just don't want to see no more bad stuff happening in the neighborhoods, you know?
Thank you.
I just got done coaching a T-ball team, you know, and it was the most funnest time I've ever had in my life with those little kids, and I'd like to see that come over to Wanda Park. Haven't seen much activity over at Wanda Park over there, but I'd like to see that kind of stuff. But we're not going to see it if we're going to see all kinds of things going on, you know? All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council on the park issue? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing, and I will open it up for council's comments and questions, and maybe Councilman Pollock, who you are our liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, you want, do you have a perspective on this?
Well, as Mr. Delacorte alluded to at the July, actually, it was the June Parks and Rec Commission meeting, the members had a long discussion. We probably spent about 45 minutes on this topic, talking about the pros and cons, and everyone was a little bit hesitant of removing park space from our city. However, I believe that most, if not all, of the members agreed that a lot of resources are being wasted on that small strip of space. There's, like it's been talked about, there's no programming on the, in the park. There's a basketball net that is used occasionally by some employees in the area, and a grill and a couple picnic tables. So with the approval of the, through the approval of the Parks and Rec Commission, they had a number of recommendations, which was that the money that was raised through the sale of the property be reinvested into our parks, that the removal of the equipment be redistributed throughout the rest of the parks, that any trees that currently exist on the property be replanted, not replanted, but be, new trees be planted in our existing parks to replace those trees that will be lost, and to improve all possible pedestrian crossings for the residents that currently live in that area to other parks that are closest to, the closest one being Vestor Park, so that it makes it easier for those residents to cross Nine Mile.
Questions, just a moment.
I just have a couple of questions, a clarification from what Derek said. So you had indicated that the proceeds from the sale would go into parks in the surrounding area. Is that the intent, or does this go into the entire park system? Because I've heard it both ways.
Well, I think if we were to proceed with a sale, which would only come after council makes a decision tonight, I would leave that recommendation up to the Parks and Rec Board and the Recreation Department as to how best to utilize any funds from it. Both have been generated, or suggested, that they be used in the immediate area, or just put into the system as a whole, and determination's based on priority. So I would leave that up to a recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay, so they could go anyway, but it's up to Parks and Rec.
But on that point, if I may follow up, but you're not suggesting that the money would just go into the sort of the general budget of Parks and Rec? Would we earmark this money specifically for?
Park improvements.
Park improvements, and it would go into a separate fund, not for operational?
I think we would identify it as a line item. It would go into that fund, but we would identify a separate line item for that income to then determine what we are going to spend that on, whether it be improving existing equipment, buy a new piece of playground equipment.
It would go back to the parks, not, then there's nothing wrong with the soccer program, I could have put, you know, a soccer program or whatever. We'd use it.
It wouldn't go through to a program, it would go to a piece of equipment.
Okay. Great.
So that, not to beat a dead horse, but then, because we do have a draft proposed motion, and I don't think it says that, so when the motion gets made, I think we need to be specific. Right now, it's indicated that the monies will be directed to the Parks and Recreation Department, and I think we probably want to be more specific.
There's a couple of adjustments that I would like to make as well.
Yeah, certainly, that wasn't a decision we made prior to coming here tonight. If that's, if council's desire, then that should be clarified in the motion.
Okay. There are seven residential properties that abut the park itself, and you say they all got noticed. Did we notice, just as for my own edification, do we notice the owners of that property as well as the residents? Because I understand a good number of rentals.
Yes.
Okay. I can't read my own writing on my third question. Well, you also indicated you used the term, I just want to clarify from my own understanding, some of those properties are zoned industrial, of the residents. Are they all zoned industrial, or just some of those?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine, thank you.
Do you have, oh, I'm sorry, do you have an estimate of what that property could be worth?
Not yet, we've had some initial discussions on it. It's difficult, because it's not buildable under the existing zoning ordinance. So it's value depending on, we could do a per-dollar-square-foot related to surrounding properties, but it's not a buildable piece, it's not deep enough. So the value really comes from being adjacent to or contiguous with other properties. So if we move forward tonight, we're certainly going to work with Oakland County's assessing, and maybe even a contract and appraisal, to have an actual appraisal of the property done, to determine its value.
So what if we determine, when you put it up for sale, that it's not worth much, okay? It doesn't generate a lot of income. Then the question becomes, well, was that worth, you know, was $1,000 worth of park equipment worth, you know, potentially sacrificing it? Are we, so I guess my point is, are we doing this in the right order? In other words, if we delist it today, and then we discover that it has marginal value...
Well, it does become taxable property, then.
Well, I think we did debate the order quite strangulously. What we didn't want to do is market it for sale without bringing it forward to council and holding the public hearing. We did not feel it was appropriate to reach out for potential sale. We would certainly understand if council wanted to withhold delisting it until we did, but we were very hesitant to move forward with any marketing of the site until we had this conversation and held a public hearing with city council.
But if I may not hold up the process, I understand that it's true that we can always put it back in the park system. If we do this today, get a value that we don't feel is worth it?
Get the value we don't like, bring it back and relist it.
Correct. That is our intent. If it were delisted today, we would immediately market it for sale and see if there is interest in purchase or acquisition of it, and obviously, there's certain adjacent or adjoining properties that may consider it more value than, as someone who is purchasing it as standalone. If there's no interest in that area, and it doesn't do what we think it will do and alleviate some of the parking issues that are there currently, then we may be back here saying that we should either hold on to it, or wait till a later date, or potentially considering putting it back in the plan.
If I may though, through the chair, because you've brought parking up a number of times, and I understand that's a need there, but can you reconcile for me, if we do go ahead and sell it, once it's out of our hands, there's no guarantee it's going to be a parking lot, right? Or is it just the type of property, there's no other good use for it?
Well, we can certainly guarantee it's used through the purchase agreement if we choose to. We can choose to sell it for whatever reason we want, and put those obligations into a purchase agreement or some type of approval document going forward. So we can determine what its highest and best value is, whether it's, you know, just a cost of the property, or to facilitate some other type of increased investment in the area. We can make that determination based on what offers we get.
Thanks. Well, and at that point, we still have to go through that process again. If someone purchases that property and then decides to put, to do it as a parking lot, those residents then have to be made notice that a parking lot's going to end up going there. Is that correct? Or do they receive no notice at all?
It depends on under what process it would be done. The answer is, could be either, depending on what process is chosen.
Do you feel that you need to delist it before you can market it to get credible response?
No, I mean, we could certainly go ahead and seek offers on it prior to delisting it. What we were hesitant to do was do it prior to having this discussion.
Okay.
If it wasn't delisted tonight, but the direction of council was to move forward, I'm seeing some head shaking from the city attorney, so.
Dan, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, the ability of the city to sell it while it's part of the parks plan is more restricted than if it's out of the parks plan.
But not to sell it, but to market it, I guess was my point. I mean, you'd have to still come back to council, you know, with a purchase agreement of some sort. agreement of some sort.
There's additional requirement, more than just coming to council if it's part of the parks plan.
Yeah, I don't think you can market something without the intent to sell it.
Can you explain your concern a little bit more?
Uh, it's not a concern, that's, uh, that would be too strong of a word, but it, but I was just thinking, if it's, if it doesn't matter if it's delisted or not delisted before we market it, then maybe it would be easier not to delist it so we don't have to come back and revisit this. But, um, if that, if, if, if that creates additional problems. I, I think Councilman Martin is right. We can always relist it, if that's the right term, later. So I'm not concerned about that.
I think without, with it still as part of the, the parks and recreation plan, it, it, uh, would have contingencies that would make the marketing of it, uh, less productive.
Okay.
Through the chair, I have a question, or just a clarification of what I'm looking for, and I think it's been said, but I want it to be very clear. I'm looking for cost itemization to replace the trees, what the crosswalk markings are going to cost, um, because we need to, those are the conditions of changing in all the parks and rec plan. Um, and then what is the cost to relocate the actual, the net and the basketball slab? I guess that's what it would be. Um, just so we know part of our cost of our sale. So, um, I just wanted to make that, that clear.
Okay, just to be second to piggyback off that as a clarifying question, where does the, out of what fund or account does the money then to sanitize, if you will, the, the lot, once we sell it come out of? Does that get charged to Park and Recs as an expense? Does that come out of the general fund? Is that?
Or is that part of the new owner's responsibility of being the owner of that land?
Land.
Yes.
That's. That would be correct. Okay, it's their responsibility, because they have to remodel the property, so to speak, because they're new the landlord.
Does that have to be part of the motion?
No, not in, not from my understanding, no.
And then, um, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I really appreciate Mr. Reed's intent to provide, um, ongoing, um, play equipment for children, um, but fifteen years ago, if I look at this site, um, it's clear to me that this site has changed, this property area has changed over the years. While it's always been industrial, um, another item on the city council agenda tonight is the, um, DTE substation, which is, what, not even a quarter of a block away from this park of where we're going to, um, ask or approve tonight, um, that it's going to go in this new, new spot, just to, really adjacent to, to the park. So, um, I just think children, it's not a great place where you want your children to be congregating to play. Um, so with that in mind, I'm not one to remove park space, um, but this is why it's come to council, because it just doesn't seem like to fit this area anymore. Um, so I'm in favor in, in exploring, um, what the cost can be for the city, um, if we sell it and is it worth, worthwhile.
And I've driven by that park over the last couple of months, probably twelve times on different days and different times, and only once did I see a few people utilizing the basketball court.
Right. Um, one of my concerns, though, is, is that when you remove a park beside someone's house, you're sort of devaluing the value of their home, because parks and open space is seen as a benefit to your household. So I don't know how you address that concern, um, of what it would do to the value of the house, and I'm not sure if we can do anything about that. Um, but that would be one of my...
Yeah, we, we share the same concern. Obviously, we would never be here if the, if the properties, even the ones that are used as residential, hadn't already been rezoned to industrial. Um, because they've already been identified as existing non-conforming, restrictions put in place as to their expansion and their ability to rebuild if there's damage related to the property, um, from a zoning standpoint, they're, they're, they're moved on from residential. We wouldn't be here but for that, so we certainly understand the concern.
Do you know when that zoning change was made?
I believe it was, it was prior to me being here, but I believe it's part of the MAP amendment and the zoning ordinance adoption in two thousand and ten, uh, that it was done. That's my understanding. We didn't, we didn't go back into the history, um, to see when it was, but I believe that's when it was done.
All right. And any other comments or questions? A, a motion would be in order.
Good afternoon.
Oh! Yes, sir? You found the article.
No, but I, I have the memo that I gave Michelle on, uh, it being unacceptable just to lose the hoop in the park itself.
Well, give us a minute, because you're going to hear in the motion, I believe, that we're gonna, we've heard you.
We're going to honor your request.
I see. Okay, well, you know, it's very personal and I'm listening to you and the last thing I want to do.
I appreciate it.
I'll trust you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Well, I believe he can make a comment once the motion is made as well.
Yes, he, yes.
So, um, I move to remove Saratoga Park Sidewell Number Two-Five-Three-Five-Oh-One-Zero-Four-Zero-One-Six from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as a city, quote, mini-park in review of needs and requirements of our park and recreational facilities with the below findings and conditions. Findings, one, lack of accessibility to the park. Saratoga has the lowest number of households within a quarter mile compared to any city park. Residential households are likely to decrease within proximity of the park in the future due to expansion of industrial properties in the area and the zoning of the neighborhood in, as general industrial. The park also has the lowest possible rating at, for barrier-free status. Two, the potential sale of the property to a major local business will create funds to improve park and recreational facilities that will benefit more residents that the decommissioning of the park will disadvantage. There are four parks within a half mile of Saratoga Park that are better suited for recreation and could improve from the sale. Conditions, one, value from the sale of the park is directed to the Parks and Recreation Department for improvement or purchase of new park equipment. Two, removal of all equipment be redistributed to other parks within the city, specifically the basketball hoop be moved to Vester Park. Three, replant trees removed from Saratoga Park throughout other parks within the city. And four, improve all possible pedestrian crossings to parks in close proximity.
So it was moved by Pollock and supported by Martin. Now it's open for discussion again. Sir, did that address, um, I don't know if you heard that condition, but I'm, I'm looking at you, so, yeah.
It sounds good to me, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Like I say, no purpose is to dispute that hoop.
Excellent.
It has to be, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, uh, again, we got to figure out what gets worth, it's a cost factor, like you say, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me ask you a question. The, the fourth condition we haven't talked much about, but improve all possible pedestrian crossings to parks in close proximity. Help me understand what the, 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 uh...
I think it's making, making it easier for residents that currently live there to be able to cross Nine Mile to reach Vester Park, and I believe those will be addressed next year when we redo the Nine Mile streetscape, the, the streets and, uh, the resurfacing and, um, streetscape for two thousand and fifteen.
So at the basic level, you're talking about the white zebra stripes.
And the, um...
Signal light.
Signal light to allow pedestrians to cross. And that would be about the right area, um, uh, based on the distance from Hilton.
In the motion, we spoke about purchase of equipment. Do we want to limit ourselves by the term equipment, or do we want to say equipment or prop, and/or property? Because say one of your improvements in the other parks requires a silver property. This is a potential fund to use that with. I don't know that it would, but the way the motions were did today were near, somewhat narrowly limited to just equipment. Does that give you enough room?
I'm not opposed to that amendment.
I'll offer it. To change equipment to equipment and property and/or property.
Uh, Lloyd, our, yeah. Our Lloyd, our DPW director, are you comfortable with the things that we're conditioning, the removal of the equipment, the removal of the trees, which falls on your folks to do? No problem? Okay. All right, you check.
And I think to address, uh, Councilwoman Piana's concern about replanting trees, a lot of these would be new saplings, so I don't think it would be that expensive to, uh, plant a lot of those. In fact, you can get a dozen from Arbor Foundation for twenty bucks.
Right, well, I'm looking at Google Maps Satellite now and, you know, it doesn't look like there's a lot of trees there, so, um, it's not a huge replacement. There's five, is that what you, thanks, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. And I'll just say, I'm comfortable doing this, especially because any sale of the property would have to come back here so that we can assess the, the true value of this piece of property and see if it was worth it. So, uh, I'm comfortable personally. Any other comments or questions? Sherlyn, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted.
May I ask through the chair one question? Do we have to vote separately on the amendment? Because we offered an amendment to the end.
Oh, it wasn't, second please.
What's that?
I didn't hear a second.
I said you had the amendment.
But I added it into the motion.
All right, as long as we're good, I just want to...
Is it in the motion? I thought it was, I thought it was a friendly amendment, so we'll treat it as such. Thank you.
As long as it's in there.
All right. Um, next item of business is called the audience. I want to thank everybody for their patience. We've taken a little longer than usual before we get to there, but sir, we'll let you go first, since you've, you've already started.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem at all.
All right, John Boge, three fifty-one, West Maplehurst, been there for forty-one years, and for all that time, we've been trying to get, uh, the traffic slowed down, uh, less traffic and, and speeds, uh, limited on, on West Maplehurst. We have not been very successful. I've talked to the chief, I've talked to Paul Simpson, who actually does the work, and we have proposed, the residents have proposed numerous ways to do this. All of them have been rejected. We proposed things like, um, putting signs on saying, oh, residents only between certain hours, oh, can't do that. We proposed moving the, the turnaround, they said, can't do that. We said, how about taking and changing, uh, West, uh, uh, Camborn and making it so that those people could make a left turn at Woodward rather than coming down and having to turn all the way up to Nine Mile and then turning back around and going through another light? Oh, we can't do that. I said, well, you could take, it has not enough room. I said, you can take one, one car off the parking lot and do that. Well, can't do that. Uh, and then they, the chief said, well, we can't do that because, uh, we use that as an, uh, emergency, um, fire truck coming the other way. And I'm saying, well, is that the only street we can use? So I, I finally said, look, we've made all these recommendations, um, and you reject them all. We even put, um, signs up, twenty-five miles an hour. We bought the signs ourselves, and you made us take them down. The city made us take them down. And, you know, we're very frustrated. It's the highest, one of the highest taxed areas in the city, and we can't get any help. And we're tired of it. Frankly, we're tired of it. And we've talked to a lot of the members here. When they come and they ask us for their vote, I tell them about this, and we've still got no help. So we want some action. We want something done. The people are getting very restless. We've done what we can, we want some suggestions.
Thank you, sir. And our, our chief isn't here this evening, but, um, when he comes back, um, we'll ask him to give us a report on what, what, what he, what his observations have been, and we can challenge him on that as well.
I can tell you that they have done studies, and they say, well, it's just, you know, um, w- we have more traffic, but it's, you know, it's, it's acceptable. Well, it's not acceptable to us. And at the end of the street, at Woodward, when you go down our street, you have, you have given parking to the, um, uh, beer store, the, um, liquor store there, and when their vehicles, or people's vehicles are parked there, especially SUVs, you cannot see. You take your life in your hand when you pull out of there. So it's a dangerous situation, and we have a lot of children on that street now. I've actually lost one of my neighbors, a young couple came in, and as soon as they had a baby, they said, we're out of here, because of the traffic and, you know, so anyway, that's our feelings.
Thank you, sir.
Through the chair, um, I would like to, um, just respond. Um, the city and city council has been, um, hearing these issues because, uh, speed on traffic on, on the side streets has been an ongoing issue for many residents. And, um, I'm pleased that the Ferndale Moves project, um, that, uh, was approved by city council, um, has some new solutions in there that addresses, um, uh, speed levels on, um, our side streets. And, um, we're looking at design solutions rather than sign solutions to help calm traffic on streets. And I would direct, um, the police chief and our economic development, community director to, um, work with the residents on the streets to look at some of the design options. For example, one that came out through Ferndale Moves is a traffic circle, and we have itemized some of those on priority streets, um, in Ferndale Moves, and you can go and look at which streets are prioritized for these traffic circles. These are not roundabouts. These are small traffic circles that help calm, um, the speeds on a street. Um, and I'm not going to go into how they work tonight, but they are new solutions to address these problems in that I think we have just now need to put them into action now that we've figured out what are these, um, innovative ways to help, um, address these, uh, problems that citizens have had, have repeatedly expressed.
I, I don't know how that's going to help, because I, I'm five houses off of Livernoy, and I, I'm a retired automotive engineer, and I can tell you that they start moving from, from that, from that intersection, and by the time they get to my house, they're past the speed limit.
Right, so I'm going, yeah, thank you.
You know what, we're, so this is called the audience, this is your opportunity, but thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to address counsel this evening?
Well, yes, there is.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Mary Schusterbauer, and I'm here tonight representing Citizens for Fair Ferndale. Um, first, I want to start by expressing my appreciation, or our appreciation, Citizens for Fair Ferndale, because you, as a council several months ago, as you remember, unanimously passed the Good Neighbor Civility Resolution. So we're very excited that you joined with us in doing that. And you were joined by the Ferndale School Board, you were also joined by the Board of Directors at Fern Care, and we are now getting, um, calls from several organizations around the community who would like to hear more about the resolution and see how they might incorporate that into the functioning of their organization. Um, we were also joined by many, 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 I think hundreds of citizens, actually, at both DIY and Pride, when we asked people to take a look at the resolution, sign it, but also answer that question, how will you be a good neighbor? And we're really proud of the resolution that was passed by the Oakland County Board of Commissioners congratulating us for our work. So I, I'm trying to give you just sort of a state of civility, because many things have happened since we started this project. And, you know, to me, it's one of those things that has just felt so warm and fuzzy and so Ferndale. But I'm here tonight to say that we cannot always just pay attention to these projects when it's nice and when it's easy. There are times when these projects are necessary, and I think this is one of those times. So it's not really a coincidence that I'm here tonight. Um, we believe that to build a strong community, we have to develop our capacity for communication around difficult issues, not just when it's easy. So, like I said, it's not a coincidence that I'm here tonight. I, as a resident and as a member of Citizens for Fair Ferndale, we've been talking about a lot of communication, um, talk, some good, some not so good, about the three sixty project here in Ferndale. It's something that all of us care deeply about, and everyone in Ferndale should care deeply. But caring deeply does not mean being non-civil to each other. And so it's at these times that I think we have to raise our level of civility rather than decrease our level of civility. So we're encouraging all residents and anyone involved, um, in our community to look at the Good Neighbor Civility Pledge. We're asking organizations to continue to adopt the resolution. And besides just looking at the qualities that are listed here of paying attention, listening, being inclusive, being truthful, avoiding gossip, showing respect, seeking common ground, and repairing damaged relationships, and using constructive language, and taking responsibility and using constructive language, and taking responsibility for your own behavior, we're also asking people to really read the introduction to the resolution, because it talks about why it is we're doing this. So, to that end, I've left a whole pile of the resolutions on the back table there, and I'm hoping that's okay with you. We've also left our nifty little buttons, which represent good neighbors from downtown to doorstep. And we encourage people to take one of the buttons, take the resolution, take a button, and we ask people to please be good neighbors. Thank you.
Great reminder. Thanks, Mary. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Craig Covey, 276 West Breckenridge. And to dovetail off of what Mary's comments were, we had a very successful and very civil event on Friday evening. For the 18th year in a row, we had the Ferndale Pub Crawl. It's amazing to me that we can do this year after year after year and not have any issues or problems, but it's probably partly because of the civility that so many of us follow. But I do want to thank Councilman Martin, Councilwoman Piana, and Councilman Polica, for all three of whom attended and volunteered. We appreciate it. It grew from last year. It looks like we will raise in excess of $10,000 proceeds profit for the charities. And also, since Mary brought it up, there was one thing I wanted to ask about 360. I did attend the Town Hall meeting a couple of weeks ago at the Rust Belt, and we really ran out of time. There were a lot of folks asking questions. I didn't get to ask mine, but, and maybe it doesn't need to be answered tonight. But I would like, I hadn't heard anyone ask about how the planning for the 360 and how the planning for the new parking system that we purchased last year go together. In other words, I'd be curious to hear how the plan a year and a half ago with regards to installing the new kiosk system, the loop system, how that was planned in addition, or how that was planned with relation to the idea of redevelopment of the two big parking lots downtown. By the way, I do support redevelopment. I'm going to suggest that we keep it under six stories regardless. But I appreciate your time, and thanks again.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Paul, 349 West Saratoga. And I wanted to, I'm here finally because after 19 years in Ferndale, I don't know if I can handle being on the on-ramp to Woodward any more than a gentleman from West Hazelhurst. Two headlights, two rear-view mirrors, destroyed rear end of my car, my dog, and my sanity are all at risk. I don't know how the pub crawl is considered a nice activity when it all falls onto my street, where people are very uncivil towards each other, as they're trying to, when you have parking on each side of the road, and people are trying to pass each other, baking into a four-lane highway. That is not civil, and it's not reasonable. And I don't know why. I boycotted every restaurant in Ferndale. I tell all of my friends and relatives, "Don't come to Ferndale," because it's become so intolerable for me. And yet, I realize it's not actually the restaurants. It's the city council that allows this unconscionable thing to be happening to our neighborhood. All of my neighbors are fed up with it. The RPZ was actually very good for during the daytime, but it doesn't address special events like the pub crawl, the funky Ferndale Art Fair, which is when my dog got hit. It doesn't address all the other events, the upcoming Dream Cruise, all of these events that fall right onto the parking on those streets, on those days absolutely needs to be restricted, that there needs to be restricted to residents only for all of these special events. I love the fact that there's all of these things that can happen. It makes Ferndale a very fun place for a lot of people. But I don't like it that everybody wants to park in front of my house. It's bad enough that I have three cars, and I can only fit two cars in my driveway. That's, as if that isn't enough, because we try and actually park one on top of the other when the traffic gets really bad. But it's not enough that that's what's happening. It's the uncivil conduct. There were people pointed head-to-head in a standoff a couple of weeks ago. Neither one wanted to budge in the middle of the street, and the traffic was backed up so that people were turning around and going away. It's just something has to change. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Mrs. Ferndale, living at 315 West Troy with Sherry Wells, who I have to thank for picking out my wardrobe. Some of it was purchased at Rust Belt Market, although she told me that it's classified as vintage. But the advantage of vintage is it's clothing that can breathe. I'm announcing officially the Ferndale Remembers, which is the historical tours and talks about our fascinating city. I've given some of them already, and the two common remarks are, "Oh, really? And I didn't know that." One of my tourists has lived here her whole life, over 50 years, and after the tour, she went home, put her mother in the car, and brought her back to downtown to show one of the things that neither one of them knew that was there in full view, if you know where to look. So, this has been somewhat delayed. Mr. Gary Andrews Taylor of the Historical Museum had offered to review the script that Ms. Wells had written for me. After, I would do one little project, and that is getting 14 historical plaques up on the buildings downtown. And although that took quite a bit of time, Ms. Wells did the work, and I got to go to the photographic opportunities, of which there were two or three. And so, this will be officially starting. Saturday mornings are a good opportunity, or if five or six people get together and can name a time that would be convenient for them, then that would be fine. You will enjoy it, and any of you up there will learn some new things about the downtown or any part of Ferndale. One of the other things that Sherry is doing is the three-mile walk with the Green Cruise. And starting from the very first year, she was able to make it into a historical tour. So, there's any three miles anywhere in Ferndale, and she can do that, with a little coaching from me, of course. So, I look forward to seeing all of you up there on one of the tours.
Why, thank you. Thank you for visiting us. Good evening.
I'm Dave Catrow, resident of Ferndale with the Sierra Club Green Cruise. I see my event's been mentioned several times already today. Well, join us for the 10th Annual Sierra Club Green Cruise on Saturday, August the 9th. It's in its second year on each nine-mile at Woodward Avenue. The Green Cruise is a family event to celebrate human-powered transportation. We encourage people to walk, bicycle, or take the bus to come to our event. Green Street activities include the children's area with crafts, sidewalk chalk, and face painting. We have an eight-mile, 40-mile bicycle ride, which you should look on riding, at least in May, to get ready for it. A 9:00 AM 22-mile bicycle ride, a 10:00 AM three-mile historical walk, Ms. Wells will be conducting, a 1:00 PM four-mile family ride. At noon will be the Green Celebration Parade. Dress up, wear costumes, bring your wagon, personal shopping shirt, rollerblades for the parade. Early registration is encouraged for the two longer bicycle rides. There's a $10 preregistration through our website. This year, it's also a fundraiser for the Sierra Club, and be $15 a day of event. Come participate in the Sierra Club Green Cruise on Saturday, August the 9th. So, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. Again, on May 29th, 2014, I met with this city's code enforcement officer, Jeff. I asked him to write out a notice of violation regarding a 30-foot dead tree in the neighbor's yard at 715 West Hazelhurst. Jeff stated, "There is no law or ordinance against a dead tree. I wish there was." April Lynch, on this city's letterhead, respond to this question, "Is there a law or ordinance against a dead tree?" Dan Christ, on your letterhead, respond to the exact same question, "Is there a law or ordinance against a dead tree in the city of Ferndale?"
Dan, not to put you on the spot, is there one that you're aware of off the top of your head? Would you have to look into that?
My recollection is there's a tree that will fall on public streets or right-of-way is not allowed. I'm not sure with respect to the status of a private tree on private property.
So, I didn't want to put you on the spot. You didn't have opportunity to research that, but, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening, Ann.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening. Ann Heller, 1025...
Are you ever not up and perky?
Uh, no.
Never.
No. Just say no, okay?
[laughing]
Ann Heller, representing, of course, FernCare Free Clinic right now. Just a couple things. First of all, the clinic is not closing. With the Affordable Care Act, with the very encouraging sign-ups of both the Insurance Exchange and the continuing sign-ups of Healthy Michigan, we still have a lot of patients. We still have a lot of calls. Our calls have not diminished. We get about 15 to 30 calls a day regarding health insurance and resources and a number of other things. And we also still have patients, so we're not closing at all. The only thing that has changed is we do not have a waiting list currently. So, people who need healthcare because they have no healthcare provider and no insurance at the present time, please call us, 248-677-2273. 248-677-2273. Besides, of course, providing medical care, we also do Affordable Care Act signup and assists with questions for people to do that. The next thing I have to say is such a nice thing, and this is one of the best parts about being the president, and that is that to tell you that our dinner in May raised the most money ever. And we are humbled and grateful, and we're saying thank you. Everyone here that came to the dinner, David, you were very, very instrument with that. He was master of ceremonies. Thank you. It was a great dinner, and we appreciate, we certainly appreciate the support that we get from the city. In fact, from all of the cities in South Oakland County. It's very nice. It just makes us smile. It makes us work harder. That's what you guys do. Also, I have to do a pitch to for Healthy Michigan. Healthy Michigan is the Affordable Care Act version of Michigan Medicaid, a new version of Medicaid. Please, please, if you know anyone without insurance, it is really true, the whole process, if you go online or telephone call, is truly a half an hour. A half an hour. This is probably the easiest online application you have ever seen in your whole entire life. I have personally have helped people through the application. And it's, first of all, it's really simple. You just go to michigan.gov/healthymichigan. It comes up, you click on it, and you're in. It's incredible. And also, when you get on that page, you'll see, let's say you're not comfortable. It's just not something that you can do. There's an 855 number listed right there, too, where you literally can complete it by phone, the application by phone, where you're talking to, not a robot, you're talking to a real human, and they ask real questions, and you answer real questions, and you do that, too. It is, it's pretty, it's pretty good. There have been some issues, but there are issues, for instance, there'll be because you are applying for social security, you're applying for another form of state or federal assist. And of course, obviously, they hold your application while you do that. But there's, other than that, there's very, very few things that hold up these issues. People are being notified within four to 10 days if they're on where they are and what they need to do next. It's pretty, it's pretty interesting. And we have to say thank you to Department of Community Health for making this so easy to do. We had to wait until April, but for making it so easy to do. I'll be going to not only here, but to all the cities in South Oakland County. In South Oakland County, we think, it's estimated at this point, we have maybe 60, 65% of the people eligible for this program signed up. And we need now to help figure out why some other people have not signed up. So, we need, we need to do that. So, please, it's simple. Michigan.gov/healthymichigan.
Is there a deadline?
No. Healthy Michigan is open 24 hours a day. Right now, forever, we'll see, but right now. It is the Insurance Exchange which has the open and close dates, and they're not going to open until November 15 this year coming up. That's the next open date. But for Healthy Michigan, and that's, it's really simple. They've done the best. For a single person, if you make under $16,000, you're eligible. If you're a family of four, if you make under $32,000. Just keep, those are the only two numbers you really need to keep in mind. If you make below that in either category, you're probably eligible. And the best part about what they've done with Healthy Michigan is if you don't, they tell you what to do. It's a pretty easy site and all of that. And we're happy, happy to help, because we need people to get some insurance. We need people to get health insurance. We need people to get the care that they require. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ann. Great reminders. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item of business, which is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are things that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled by council from the consent agenda. So, let me read that now. Item A is the approval of a minutes of the regular meeting held July 14, 2014. Item B is the approval of Metro Act right-of-way permit for Michigan Bell Telephone Company doing business as AT&amp;T, and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement. Item C is the approval of a special event permit for the 2014 Festive Ale on November 22, 2014. Item D is the approval of a special event permit for the 2014 Funky Ferndale Art Fair on September 12, 13, and 14, 2014. Item E is the approval of the dues for the Woodward Avenue Action Association totaling $3,125 to be charged, to be charged to the account as noted. Item F is the approval of software as a service agreement with the Active Network for a one-time project cost of $17,700 and ongoing costs not to exceed 2.5% of annual registration sales to be charged to the Kulak Community Center. That was submitted by our Recreation Director and our Chief Innovation Officer. Item G is the approval of $9,995 purchase and installation of software upgrades from Utilities Instrumentation Service to be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund Repair and Maintenance Account. Item H is the approval of the emergency repair purchase of a new engine for Ford Backhoe Number 4740 from Munn Ford Tractor of Auburn Hills for $10,000 to be charged to the Motorpool Capital Account. And finally, item I is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I would request that we remove item E and F. E as in elephant, F as in frank.
E and F.
A move that we approve the agenda with items E and F removed. Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Polica, to approve the consent agenda minus items E and F. Is there discussion, either of council or of the audience? Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes. Thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Regular agenda item A is the consideration of the Ferndale Youth Assistance Donation. And who is introducing that item this evening?
I can start.
So, the manager.
As you know, it's been requested by the Ferndale Youth Assistance for assistance in their programming. They do a lot of amazing programming for the teams in our area. I do believe they have a board member here today that maybe could talk a little bit about what's going on over the course of this next year. The Drug Forfeiture Fund donates, or is the resource that we use to help fund this program, which again, does a lot of drug prevention within our community and is a very good fit for drug forfeiture. So, I believe, is it Craig is here today to talk a little bit about youth assistance and what's going on this year?
Thanks, Ms. McGrath. I appreciate that. Yes, Ferndale Youth Assistance, I think most folks are pretty familiar with, but it's a partnership that works with the courts, the police department, the city hall, and the schools, as well as the county. Actually, the top county staffer from Oakland County Youth Assistance is here as well. And we do subsist on donations. That's why I'm here all the time, raising money through pub crawls and blues festivals and things like that. But our belief, of course, is that intervention, working with youth and young people, is best done prior to problems getting worse. So, again, we work closely with the schools. We just finished up the camp program, where we sent several dozen kids to camp who wouldn't have been able to go. And these are all different sorts of camp. There are day camps, there's overnight camps, there's sport camps, band camps. We, again, work with the court system, we work with the county, we work, Pleasant Ridge made its donation recently. We work with Royal Oak Township as well. So, all the cities and the school district partnership with the police departments. Most of you, I think, have come to some of the annual dinners where we recognize the youth. But I'm certainly able to answer any questions you have. And we, again, we think a small donation really goes a long way in terms of prevention for our young people in town.
All right. Are there questions? Are there questions?
Um, yes, the fund would come out of the, the money would come out of the Drug Forfeiture Fund, it has nothing to do with the village or general fund of the city, right?
No, correct.
Correct.
I actually have a question that's kind of not related. When was the last time a study was done on how effective this type of program is? Giving figures of, you know, with, without this program, you could see, you know, youth crime increase X percentage. Do you, do you know?
Well, you know, all the different youth assistances have different levels of involvement in the community. For example, as you may know, or councilman, Mayor Protem Martin is on the board of directors of Ferndale Youth Assistance. We are pretty nimble, so that when we have problems in the schools with bullying, we bring in bullying workshops. This past year, we had some excellent programs on, on women, or I should say, girls, and ways to empower girls and prevent bullying among the young girl population. There, there are reams of data talking about some of the various interventions, because we, we work with parents who are having trouble with their kids, they need counseling or they want support if they have kids that get in trouble. You might want to join me, I might get in trouble myself. Please, Mary.
I had no idea this was on the agenda tonight. I showed up for this ability, but I think it'd be very civil to help my, the chair of Ferndale Youth Assistance here. As you know, youth assistance, when you give money to youth assistance, it's really not the same as making a donation to a charity. Youth Assistance is an intergovernmental collaboration, and we, as the court, put a caseworker here in the community, and part of the agreement is if we put the caseworker here, the municipalities and the school district will become our partners, and we have an office in every school district geographically in the county. To your question about success, we have two components of our program. One is casework. We, across the county, see close to three thousand kids a year that we struggle to keep out of the court system. It's expensive to do a really in-depth study, but the last one, which was done, and I'll admit it's a little old, but we had a ninety-two percent success rate of keeping kids out of the court system. And now, the only numbers that we track of our cases on a regular basis is at one subset of our program, but still, it's about ninety-two percent with that. And we're now looking for funds to do a larger study. But nationally, if you look at the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, you'll see many studies that have been done nationally, about for every dollar that you invest in prevention, you save about seven dollars down the road. That was way more than you wanted, right?
No, actually, that's wonderful. I think the people at home would, you know, would like to know, you know, how this program really works, because we talk about it all the time, and I'm familiar with it, but I know a lot of people at home aren't. So I appreciate that.
One of the things I think is that there are many points of entry to youth assistance, which makes it confusing, like if you get a camp scholarship, you think that's what, what youth assistance does, or if you attend a parenting program, you think that's what youth assistance does, or if you've received casework services, you think that's what it does. But it's all of those things combined, and so you're making a stronger community by having the collaboration and having the, the secondary prevention, which is the casework, and then the most primary prevention is what the volunteers do to raise money and provide those other services.
If I may add on to that, my experience on the board has been that, that even the local Ferndale impact, which is not necessarily, you'll find a study that narrow, because it is a small, smaller organization with tight, with tight budgets, but the casework that's done are all done by incredibly professional people, and the stories and the impact and the reports we see coming out that they're having are incredibly meaningful. The programs are, are well-vetted and well-tested and well-received and well-attended, and have, you know, very desirable positive impacts along the lines of the goals and objectives that they've got when they rolled them out. And again, they've got an incredibly engaged community volunteer network that works to raise the money to put these things together, so I can't say enough good things about the program and the positive impact it's got. So I'm really personally grateful, a couple of years ago, we talked about this because the funding had been reduced down at one point in time when Chief Collins stood up, stood up and said, we can look at drug forfeiture for this. So we were able to incrementally restore some of the funding we once provided. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. The vice chair of the organization is Joe Longbow, and he's a huge fan and believes strongly in the organization, so, and thanks, Mary, you saved me.
Other questions, comments of council?
Is the city council willing to increase the expenditures to the other nonprofits that we already give donations to out of other funds? So that would be my question. So we give a donation to Haven, the, and we've decreased their spending as well over the years, and so I would like, if this is a direction that the city council would like to go, then I would assume that we would also increase the donation to Haven, which is also helps abused and battered women get services in addition to the Ferndale Youth Assistance. Because we both, we'd reduce both at the same time.
I would personally be very open to looking at that. I think that's kind of a strategic decision, you know, cause by cause, but as a strategy, I have no problems doing that. You know, but we'd want to look at it piece by piece.
The difference, I, I do believe, though, and, and correct me, April, if I'm wrong, is that the money that we give Haven comes out of our community development black grant funds, which are, are set, and the Drug Forfeiture Fund is different in that it goes up and down and has variant balances. So, so, so literally giving more money to Haven would mean less money to any, the other, the other programs that CDBG.
And also draw the distinction, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Mary alluded this, too, Haven being a nonprofit, this is an intergovernmental agency that, that provides these services, so the entities are a little different. But again, I have no argument or contrary opinion to what you've expressed to take a look at.
But, but I will say, I, if I'm hearing your point, there, there are parts of this letter that are troubling to me, because it paints a rosy financial picture for the city that I don't think really exists. We're doing our best to, to maintain finances here, so I'm not in favor of doing this because suddenly the city is flush with cash, shall we say. But apparently, there's enough money in the Drug Forfeiture Fund to do this, and the police chief is supportive, which is why I am supportive. If it was coming out of the general fund or some of the other things mentioned in this letter, I would not be. But I, I, I support it with the chief's recommendation.
I have to agree with you, Mayor.
Well, would the city council consider also donating funds out of the Drug Forfeiture Fund back to Haven to increase theirs to complement? Can we do that? So I know-
I'm not sure if that's an eligible cost. Drug forfeiture funds are restricted as to how they can be applied. It may be, but I'm just not sure if that's an available resource at this time.
Something you could research and bring forward if you like.
I don't believe so, but we will research to confirm that.
Other comments or questions? Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly.
We haven't made a motion.
Oh, that's right.
I'll move that we approve the expenditure of four thousand dollars to the Drug Forfeiture Fund, funded 265 dot zero 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 dot nine eight five for Ferndale Youth Assistance.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Any further discussion? Now, Sherilyn, thanks.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, item B is the consideration of a recommendation from the planning commission for approval of a new DTE substation to be located at fifteen fifty Hilton. Derek, are you going to introduce that item?
I would be glad to, Mayor. As council is aware, staff, the city manager, and DTE have been looking for, some time now, for an appropriate location to build a, a substation. DTE identified it as a need some time ago, I don't think we needed to belabor some of the issues related to the power grid the city's had over the last few years. About a year ago, or maybe even less than that, DTE approached the city about a site located on East Saratoga, east of the railroad tracks, south of Nine Mile Road, east of Hilton as well. It's currently vacant and undeveloped piece of property that seems to fit both location and size for the development of a new substation. They approached the city, uh, city planning department with site plans, which were reviewed and forwarded to the planning commission. The planning commission did approve those site plans contingent, contingent on a special land use approval. Any substation in the city is required to receive a special land use approval, which is a discretionary approval of the city council based on a recommendation from the planning commission. The planning commission did review that request and did recommend unanimously that city council approve the special land use permit related to the, the site plan and the substation. So to not go on too long, I know DTE has a short presentation here regarding the site, the necessity for the substation, and then both staff and DTE will be available to answer any questions.
Great. So Mike, you want to introduce the?
If you do any slumming.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy to say it's good not to have seen you before.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, it seems, yes, to be, no, I very much understand what you're saying. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and members of staff. Again, I'm Mike Talcusko, I'm the regional manager for Oakland and the Pier Counties, corporate and government affairs for DTE. And this evening, I'm joined by three of my colleagues, Mr. McBlunden, our DTE corporate coordinate coordinator to the far right, in the center is Nick Carlson, he's the supervising engineer of our southeast regional engineering group, and then Mr. Carl McNeil is our senior engineer from the southeast regional engineering group. As Mr. Delacorte very well articulated, we introduced this topic a couple of years ago as something that we had on the radar, and this evening, we're at the point where we're here to tell you where we stand and, and seek your approval. And with that, I'm going to let Mr. Carl McNeil come to the podium and take you through a very brief presentation.
As was stated, we are proposing to build a new substation in Ferndale, and also to improve all the overhead distribution circuits out of that new substation. Just to give you a summary of what we're planning on doing is, the goals of this project are to improve the reliability of the power distribution system, and also to provide capacity for new low growth and to aid in redevelopment of the area. Another goal would be, as I said, to convert and revamp a total of twentieth circuits, six from the Ferndale Substation, and fourteen from the Hazel Park Substation. I'd like to mention, again, just for the record, that although the Hazel Park Substation is named Hazel Park, it's located in Ferndale. And then, after we do that work for, of building the new substation and, and doing the overhead work, we eventually plan to decommission both the existing Ferndale Substation and also the Hazel Park Substation. And this will represent a significant investment in the community of Ferndale. We look at this project as, as it's, in two parts. The first part would be what we call Phase One, and it includes rebuilding the substation and revamping six circuits out, out of, three from Ferndale and three from the Hazel Park Substation. So that's the first phase as far as we look at it, and that would represent about a thirty million dollar investment. And then beyond that, we would convert the rest of the circuits and revamp those, and that would be an additional approximately twenty million dollars for that. So we're talking, you know, fifty million dollars or more of investment. So moving along, this is the location of number one, the number one star on the map there is the location for the existing Ferndale Substation. Number two is the location of the existing Hazel Park Substation, and number three is the location for the new substation that we're proposing. It's ideal because it's, it's in between the two substations, it's at the, the load center, and it's also near the underground distribution system that's just north of there along Wester, and also it's, there's a hundred and twenty KV ITC, that's International Transmission Company, transmission line that goes right by the substation. So all of those factors coming together make it an ideal location. This is a photo of the site with equipment overlaid on, on the site. And then, this is one of our engineering drawings of, of the substation, and that tall structure is not something we plan to build, that's the existing cell tower that's there. And one of the notable features of this slide is the twelve-foot concrete wall that we would plan to build around the substation. And then moving on, this is a picture of, in red is, is, represents the new duck banks that we would be constructing, and the black is existing duck bank, so it shows where we'll tie into the existing underground system. This is an overall view of the distribution work we plan to do. If you look at some of the small lines there, to the left, it's mostly blue, and then to the right, you see red. The blue represents circuits out of the Ferndale Substation, the existing one, and the red circuits are out of the Hazel Park Substation. And that dash line you see around there is the actual boundaries of Ferndale itself, so it's showing what we're going to be rebuilding on, for the overhead portion of the work. So that concludes the presentation part of, of this proposal, and perhaps you have some questions?
I would imagine, but thank you, yes. Okay, so questions, comments of council? I guess, I, I, let me start, so you, you, the plan is to decommission the two existing substations?
Yes, after those circuits are converted to thirteen-twos, the higher voltage, thirteen-two KV, which is higher than the existing four-point-eight KV. Once that's accomplished, then we can decommission the two substations.
What is the timeline, both of the, the new state substation and then the decommission of the other two?
Okay, this is an estimate, we think the construction of the substation itself, when it would be energized, it's probably about two years from now. And Phase One that I described, it's the building of the substation, and the first six circuits would be approximately three years, and then probably the remaining portion of Phase Two would be another three years down the road before it's completed. So we're probably talking roughly six years total.
I have a follow-up question. Can you explain why the duration is so long?
That's a small map, but that's twentieth circuits, so there's a lot of design and a lot of construction work there. It's just a pretty big undertaking, very big undertaking. We're talking, like I, as I said, about fifty million, maybe, maybe up to sixty. So that's a lot of work.
Will there, I'm sorry, will there be any residential road tear up? Because I know residents would worry about that, all of a sudden, half of their street is torn up because you need to replace cable, if any of it's underground?
Okay, this probably, probably will help to answer that question. The majority of the excavation would be in the area where the, where the red line is, that's new duck bank. So that will require excavation, and there's minor excavation outside of these areas. There's a few minor areas, but that's, that's basically the limit up, right there that you see in red.
Okay. Now, you mentioned earlier, the black is the existing, the red is the new, but I see some blue in there as well. Along there, I see some blue and then, uh, over the railroad tracks.
I'll explain that, that's the key words, railroad tracks, so we don't excavate there, we put a sleeve under the railroad tracks.
Okay.
It's a steel pipe, basically.
I'm assuming you would do the same thing then along, is that Wanda? No.
Banner?
Banner, no. Banner's there.
Pharaoh.
Pharaoh?
If there's railroad track there, yes, we would have to do that.
No, but it's blue for whatever reason.
Uh, it's just to differentiate what we're doing there.
Okay.
So, if I may, what's DTE's corporate practice? If you, three years from now, six years from now, you shut the other two substations down, correct, in lieu of the new one that we've built? Does DTE, as a general principle, hold the property at that point, or would you put it to market?
It's going to depend a lot on, on the circuits that are in that area now. If we, if they need to stay there, then I think we would keep the property. We, we can make some adjustments with that, but if there's no circuits on the property and it's not too hard to reroute them somewhere else, then maybe we would do that and perhaps sell the property, but we haven't reached all those conclusions yet.
Okay, thank you.
But they are very attractive parcels of land, in particular, the west Nine Mile one is right in the middle of our DDA, so if there was any opportunity to redevelop that, would be very attractive to the city.
All of the design has not been completed on the distribution part of the project, so.
Sure, understood.
And this new facility would have all brand-new equipment, you're not refurbishing any existing equipment in the two facilities and transferring them over to this new facility, correct?
No, it, it's totally new facility and new voltage level, new transformers.
Okay, thank you.
Approximately double the capacity. Approximately double the capacity.
Other questions, comments?
I just have a comment. As the city council representative to the planning commission, wanted to express thanks to Derek Delacorte, working really hard to find an appropriate piece of property for the substation. And I think, based on its location and proximity to Hazel Park and in the middle of Ferndale, it's really a win-win situation for both parties. And that's what the planning commission felt, which is why the special land use application was recommended unanimously. And if you go back, could you go back one more slide? Oh, two more to the map. So where this is, one of the questions is about the wall and what does that look like and how does, how well-kept the wall would be and safety concerns regarding the enclosure of the electrical, what are they called again?
There's...
The hubs, is that what you call them?
Oh, it's a substation.
The substation. So with it, right along the railroad tracks and behind an existing industrial building, it really is, it's really well-protected from residential homes and I think is the best possible location, given the needs.
I've got a question. Based on the drawing, the thin yellow line or line green, I don't know if I'm colorblind, that goes all the way up to Hilton, correct? That's going to border Hilton there? And you'll have like a drive entrance from Hilton?
Yes, there's two entrances. One at the northern end there, that would be DTE's entrance. And there's another one down near the south end, and that would be the ITC's entrance.
Okay.
I know that when we do clean the Ferndale up and the group that usually gets Hilton in that area, that section along there where the train tracks are tends to get a lot of debris. So I would hope in design some way that we could landscape it so that it doesn't tend to collect chip bags and pot cans and bottles that somehow it's easier to clean up than trying to get it through debris.
Well, I'd be presumptuous here. We would have a different caretaker of that property. Would that be something DTE would be doing to maintain as part of their property, is doing trash pickup?
We have a maintenance organization that's responsible for keeping our grounds presentable. In the cases of lawns, keep the lawns cut. In the case of trees, keep the trees fit. So, yeah, this would be part of our package to make sure the site is aesthetically pleasing and valuable.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the audience as well? Well, then, I'd like to thank you for your work on this. I know that it's not going to guarantee there'll be no more outages in Ferndale, but I think it will improve the reliability, and we appreciate that.
It adds more additional capacity and flexibility as we move forward.
Thanks, okay. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please? Ah, wait, have we had a motion? We've not had a motion.
I move to approve in the matter of 155 Hilton Road, DTE substation construction. City council approves of the special land use permit based on the plan stated April 25th with the following findings. Should I read them all?
Yes, please.
Okay. Finding number one, the proposed development does not detract from, erode, or reduce the desirability or economic viability of any residential or business uses within 2,500 feet of the proposed use. Finding number two, the site is designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and will not change the essential character of the area. Number three, the site is served adequately by existing public services and facilities and does not impose additional service demands upon the city that will not be adequately addressed by the applicant. The proposed improvement to the site does enhance the public health, safety, welfare, and economic benefit and the municipal purposes and policies of the city. Number five, the plans are consistent with the intent and purposes of this chapter and the objectives of the master plan and comply with all applicable state and federal laws.
There's what I'm looking for. All right, moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Any last comments or questions of anyone? All right, Sherilyn?
Council members, Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Next item of business, item C, consideration of recommendation from the planning commission for approval of a special land use permit for a medical marijuana facility to be located at 1915 East Nine Mile Road. Derek, that's also you this evening.
Yeah, it seems to be my night.
In overtime tonight.
Yeah. Similar to the last item, this is an item that came before the planning commission recently for a consideration of a site plan approval and recommendation regarding a special land use. The applicants are requesting or proposing a wellness facility with an associated medical marijuana component to it under the city's zoning ordinances. As part of that ordinance, any medical marijuana facility is considered a special land use within certain zoning districts in the city, the subject site being one of them. And the applicants did file the appropriate application with the city's community and economic development department. That application was reviewed by both city staff, the police department, the city attorney for its completeness, was determined to be complete and conform with the city's applicable ordinances related to such a facility. This is a, not a, there is no grow component to this facility, which has a significant set of additional criteria associated with it. The planning commission did review the site plan. They did withhold approval of the site plan for a couple of minor site plan issues, a screening wall to be added. So the planning commission did ask for that site plan to come back. So if this does move forward tonight, it would have to be conditioned on the planning commission approving that site plan. However, they did recommend unanimously that the council take up and approve the special land use portion of the project. The city's, the staff report included in your packet identifies the considerations for a special land use. It also has the criteria for a medical marijuana facility as defined in our ordinance. With that, I think the applicants are here. I'd ask them to come up and briefly describe their business operation and their model similar to the presentation they made to the planning commission. And then, as always, we'll be here to answer any questions after.
Sure, if somebody wants to come up for the applicant, that'd be great. And thanks for your patience.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Thank you, guys, council for being here. Thank you, Derek, for introduction. Basically, like Derek had said...
And your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Adam Applebaum. I'm the CEO. My business partner, Justin Sav, is in the back. He's president of the company.
Thanks.
So, yeah, like Derek had said, it will be a wellness facility with the aspect of medical marijuana. That will be one of the things we're offering there. We work very hard. We want to be in accordance with all the laws, everything you guys have. If you guys have any questions, you know, we're here to answer it. I think, I didn't bring anything with me today. I thought this was just kind of going to be a drop in the mail that we went over it in pretty thorough detail.
Your presentation, slides?
No, no, no. If I want a DTE, I feel a little...
Samples? No, sorry, no, never mind, never mind.
I mean, if you guys have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
The site, the site is currently developed with an existing standalone structure, formerly used as a party store. It's located at 1915 East Nine Mile Road. As we said before, the zoning is applicable to the subject site. The operation, in addition to any other wellness facilities, operates with what's been identified in their business plan as three primary caregivers. And in accordance with the state legislation, in review of their business plan, they can each have an associated, five patients associated with each caregiver. And I'd certainly ask the city attorney to correct me at any point here, regardless to the law. But their business plan, after being reviewed by both the attorney and the police chief, appears to conform with those. There is a motion in the packet relative to the special land use. We would ask that the one condition that the planning commission requested that did not get in the draft motion would be that, based on the business plan, that as part of the special land use approval, they be limited to those three caregivers and associated patients, which would limit it to a total of three caregivers and a potential 15 patients for the operation. That is as much a function of the site capacity and parking related to the special land use as it is to any concerns over operational functionality. So those are the, kind of the specifics of the site. The site plan does incorporate enough parking for this facility by ordinance. There were some facade improvements incorporated with it and also screening and interior parking landscaping in accordance with what the zoning ordinance requires.
Questions, a fact, or a motion? Either would, either are appropriate.
Do we have to open it up to the public?
After the motion.
Oh, after the, once there's a motion?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, no, it's, I'm just saying, it's motion. But I do have some questions, a fact, that's the...
Okay.
Your CEO, Justin, is listed also as title as CEO as First Class Home Care Incorporated. How, what is your business structure? And how does that business relate to Meridian Wellness?
Justin, I have to answer that one for you. That's his other business.
Is there a relation, or is there?
There is no relation to either businesses. He owns a, it's a nurse care, private nursing, so, and no relation whatsoever.
Okay, I just, and as to the planning commission's request to limit it to the existing patients and the existing caregivers, is that a financially viable model for you with that volume to stay open and keep your doors open?
In respect to the medical marijuana, that would be all we would be doing. But then we'll also have other things that will generate funds. We can sell clothing. We're a nonprofit fundraising, which we would also like to go in with the city and maybe, you know, do things and help out around the city and donate money, do fundraisers and things like that. We can open, you know, any number of things to sell, to offset the amount of money that, you know what I mean? But off of 15, you know, I, yeah, it could be, you know?
So you're an established 501(c)? You said you're a nonprofit?
When, when you're open to the general public, can one of your clients come in at that time for service? My understanding is no. Is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
If you're open, you mentioned that you're going to be a wellness center, and I'm assuming you're going to be doing things like seminars, educating people. Well, if you have a room full, 10, 12 people through a seminar, my understanding is you wouldn't be allowed to have a client come in at that time for...
Correct.
For service.
Correct. What we did, we came up with the council in the last meeting, what we're going to do is schedule all of, any activities like that will be scheduled. Caregiver, patient, you'll have a day, whether it be, you know, if we can get it on a regular thing, hopefully with certain ailments, you can. It's kind of, when you need it, you need it. Other things we can kind of schedule, though, you know? This is your day, Tuesdays are your day, Wednesdays are your day, and they're going to come and get it. And that way, we can schedule seminars for our open days, open to the public, you know? So keep it compartmentalized.
Can you also explain how someone can become a client? You're the caregiver. How do you, how do you become the caregiver for an individual? Or how does an individual become a caregiver, a client under you? I think there's a lot of concern with the public that people can just come into this facility, and I understand there's not. I've done a lot of research, and I had the pleasure of hearing your presentation at the planning commission last month, the month before. So I do understand the process, but unfortunately, that wasn't televised. So I want to make sure that the public's well aware of what kind of activity is going on here and that you're not just going to be opening your doors for anyone to come in to receive caregiver service.
Right, right. This isn't recreational. This also isn't a doctor's office. We can recommend you to a doctor. There's any number of them, whether it be, I know it's used loosely as pot doctors or what I like to call is a doctor that will put his medical license on the line for the care of his patient and doesn't mind what mainstream thinks about it. So we appreciate all of them and them doing that. However, this facility, you can't walk in the door. You can't get certified there. If you're one of our patients or the caregivers, we're basically filled right now. And it's through word-of-mouth referral, really, and who we want to take on, what ailments we feel we can cure, who we can help. This facility, however, one of the main things is at the patient base and the caregiver base is what we see is, like you mentioned, it's very hard for a patient to get matched with a caregiver. A lot of people feel uncomfortable with a caregiver coming to their home. Some of they have no idea, they heard word-of-mouth, you know, whatever. And then they have to invite them into their home with their family and talk about something that was a Schedule I narcotic on the federal level. It can be very scary, and that's understandable. This way, we can facilitate a neutral ground, a safe place with security. We've talked to the chief of police, you know, they're welcome to come in, you know, see everything. It's a very, very patrolled area of nine miles right on the border. So, I mean, every time we're down there, there's a heavy police presence, and that's greatly appreciated. So hopefully, all of our patients feel very safe. I know I do going there. I don't have any, you know, qualm about going in and out of the building. So I don't feel that they will either. But, yeah, basically, this facilitates a place for the patient base to come and get the help needed, you know, and really help them, you know? Get the information, the legal aspect of it, all the laws that are ever-changing. It's a crazy gray area out there right now, you know? Gets a little scary. But we want to be the ones that do it right and create a place, you know? You can come and feel safe and get the right knowledge and, you know, get what needs to happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
You know, on that point, it says in your application here or whatever all this, whatever part I'm in here, you must be a member of Meridian Wellness in order to enter the premises. So literally, are we talking about those, I guess they would be 15 customers? Does that...
Well, we're going to be a membership-based club. So that would be another way, actually, to raise financial stability would be, you can be a general public and be a member. However, you can't get medication from us. You have to be a patient to one of the caregivers, one of the three caregivers.
But you could go to your seminars or your classes or...
Correct.
But you still have to be a member to do those as well? Those aren't open to the general public?
We've been tossing that back and forth. It depends on, you know, if we're able to make money, it might have to be a member-based, you know what I mean? 10, 15 bucks a year, a couple hundred people, that would really help, you know what I mean? Some sort of residual would be great. But if we can afford to do it and keep it free and hand the knowledge out and do it that way, we would really like to do it. So, I hope that.
Other questions or a motion?
I'm moving in the matter of 1915 East Nine Mile Road, Meridian Wellness. The city council approves the special land use permit based on the date, based on plans dated March 13th, 2014, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions. Finding number one, that the proposed development does not detract from, erode, or reduce the desirability of economic viability of any residential or business uses within 2,500 feet of the proposed use. The site is designed, constructed, operated, and maintained as to be harmonious with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and will not change the essential character of the area. The site design of the proposed special land use shall minimize the impact of the site activity on surrounding properties. Finding number three, that the site is served adequately by existing public services and facilities and does not impose additional service demands upon the city that will not be adequately addressed by the applicant. Four, the proposed improvements to the site does enhance the public health, safety, and welfare of the economic benefit and the municipal purposes and policies of the city. Five, the plans are consistent with the intent and purposes of this chapter and the objectives of the master plan and comply with applicable state and federal laws. And with the conditions, number one, that there is no growing operations that take place at the location. Number two, that the planning commission approves the final site plan prior to the issuance of any permits or a certificate of occupancy. And three, that based on the business plan, the site be limited to those three caregivers as listed in the application and 15 established patients.
Support.
All right, moved by Martin and supported by Polica. Now, additional comments or questions? Just a couple. Do you have other locations? This is your first?
No, we don't. This is my first location.
I actually have a question.
This might be a question for, internally for Derek or Lieutenant. But so, as Dan very articulately described, a lot of conditions and things, how are these things enforced from a city perspective? Is that a, is that a, is that a planning economic development code enforcement thing? Is that a law enforcement thing? Is it a combination of the two? I've just...
Yeah, I mean, especially from a zoning or use standpoint, the site plan requirements are enforceable through the contract, which is a site plan. Once it is approved, it becomes a contract between the city and the applicant. It has to be upheld. So the exterior zoning issues are the same as any other site plan in the city. As far as the conditions of the special land use permit, I think it's, if we became aware of any violations of those, the first thing would be to notice the app... of any violations of those, the first thing would be to notice the applicants and we would enforce those through potentially enforcement actions or revocation of a certificate of occupancy for the building if they're no longer in conformance with those. And then if the, if the issues were more extreme, obviously if they were of a nature that were outside the zoning and land use issue, they would be handled either through the police department or the city attorney's office.
Right. All right. And so on that point, and I don't anticipate, given the number of people that you're going to have there and the kind of activity, I think it'd be fine, but the third condition was that you're adequately served by existing public services and facilities and it does not impose an additional service demand upon the city. I'm not sure how that's measured exactly, I mean, in police runs or something, like, again, I can't imagine that that would, but what is the city's ability, what is the city's ability to say, oops, that did create an additional demand on the city and we need to revisit that? What would be the city's recourse? And maybe, Dan, I'm going to throw that question to you. What would the city's recourse be if that particular requirement was deemed not being met?
Well, the issue, as Derek noted, would brought to the attention of the applicant and ultimately, if it would, if council believed that the criteria were not met, he would have an opportunity or an option to go to court and seek asserting a violation of the special land use permit and it would have proofs that would be necessary to be established in order to have a court declare a nuisance as it relates to the performance of the property owner not being consistent with the approval granted. And there would be proofs asserted perhaps by the police, code enforcement, that would assist the city in trying to establish and meet that burden.
So, I'm sorry if I made, so unlike the bars and restaurants that serve liquor where we review their licenses every year, we don't have the opportunity of annually or every two years to review how this-
Not a special land use, no.
Okay. How this business impacts, you know, city services and-
Correct. That's a different process that's authorized through the Michigan Liquor Control Act that provides for that remedy for a city to have an opportunity to review and rescind its approval of annual licenses.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I just want to make sure, it is in the documentation, but again, for the people at home, the 15 clients that you currently serve, the three caregivers, patients that you serve, you already currently serve these patients, correct?
Yes, there's not actually 15 at this time, but yes.
Okay.
There's open spaces that we're keeping open until we're-
You open the doors.
Right. We're within the city and we can-
And finally, no product will be stored at this facility overnight?
No. And that's another thing I wanted to touch on. We're going to have safes and this is something I, that's the one thing I don't feel safe with. We were talking about liquor, there's used to be a liquor store, everyone wants to compare it to liquor, so I guess I will. Here we go. You can store liquor at a bar or a liquor store overnight and, in respect, maybe, sorry, you said Lieutenant, maybe he can touch on this as well. Wouldn't it be more dangerous for us to take it off-site every night? Wouldn't it create an opportunity for something to happen if someone knew? I mean, this is all public record, someone knows we're going to be coming and going off-site, you know, I mean, at a pharmacy, no one makes them take, you know, all their pills off the shelves every night or, I mean, it just seems like it would create more of a security aspect and risk and need more policing and more money on the city to do something like that. So I guess I want to ask the city, what would the reason for taking it home and driving with it and going through other city and, what would the reason for that be? How would that help?
Derek, was that addressed at the Planning Commission or was that addressed through law enforcement? I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I mean, I remember it being touched on in discussion, but I don't think there was any, ever any condition or requirement that's been removed from the site. And I'll defer to Dan if there was none, there wasn't any condition of the approval that that-
There's not a condition, that condition is not in-
That is not a condition.
That you have.
I didn't realize after I went home and I reviewed everything, I kind of was thinking it over and I-
The safes are a requirement, but removing it at night is not, right? Is that, so we're clear? Because I was going to say, I don't remember seeing that you had to do that.
No, I think that discussion took place and then the Planning Commission was much of the same opinion that removing it from the facility at night created as much concern as leaving it there overnight.
Valid point.
Okay. I did not see it in our packet, however, it was in a newspaper article and so, again, I'm one of those people guilty of looking at a newspaper article and thinking it's fact, so.
Yeah.
No offense to Mike, by the way.
Some other reporter. And just, I guess, just so that it's clear, I wasn't on council, I wasn't the mayor the last time there was an issue with a dispensary in Ferndale and the county actually came in and closed them down, but my understanding is the difference between this facility, again, I'm sorry to keep looking at you, Dan, but the difference between this facility and what happened in the city before is, there's no, there's no patient-to-patient sale here, there's no use obviously allowed here. Help me with the distinction of what happened before.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure of the exact framework of those prior cases and I think they actually are still in court with respect to some of those cases, so they're not resolved. But certainly I think the locked facility requirement is more clearly addressed in this application. One of the areas that has continued to evolve with respect to this area of the law has been that there's clarity from the courts that patient-to-patient sales are no longer permitted where it was a, not a clear issue at the time of that prior case. That's one issue. The applicant has indicated each qualified patient would have its own separate locked facility per caregiver, so there would not be co-mingling. That was another issue, I'm not sure in the, in the prior case, but that has been an issue with respect to law enforcement. So there's been some refinement with respect to this application, given the evolution of cases and court cases that have happened in this area.
I appreciate that and it does feel helpful that there's more clarity around some of these rules.
Absolutely, absolutely. And for the record, were those other establishments in Ferndale, were they licensed through the city? Did you guys actually issue them a license or were they just kind of, they bought a building and opened up?
No, there was, again, I wasn't on council, but there was a lot of licensing and regulation that went into it, but confusion about what was, we were allowed to do versus what the county interpreted we were allowed to do, I suppose.
Right, right. I wasn't aware, that's why I couldn't find any, any research on it or anything when I looked, so.
All right. Is there anyone from the public, by the way, that would like to, yeah, sure, come on up?
Deborah Young, 440 West Troy. I know you all know me as a marijuana activist. Today I stand before you as a medical marijuana patient. I am thrilled to see that a facility is going to open in Ferndale. I like to keep all my business local. Right now I have to drive into Macomb County. This would be very convenient for me. It's also helpful to know that a couple of bills have made it through Lansing, through their House of Representatives. One of the bills just came out of the Senate Committee in the last couple of days that's going to clarify dispensaries in Michigan. It's a bipartisan bill, the Republicans are actually backing it. There is enough votes, they should all be cleared up in the next month or so. It's not just dispensaries, it's also medibles, which are, you know, different forms of medication. People don't want to smoke, children can't smoke, things of that nature. So I'm thrilled to see this. I know that we had issues in the last dispensary that was opened here, like you were saying, Dave, that Oakland County came in, they have a different interpretation. I believe that's all going to be straightened out. It looks like it's all going to be straightened out and I really welcome these folks, I'm very excited to see them here. I know many people who are medical marijuana patients, we have to drive into Detroit or Macomb County. We don't feel safe in Oakland County because of what's going on with the sheriff and prosecutor, so we leave the county. I would love to stay in Ferndale and do this. And I agree that it's very dangerous to move this stuff off-site at night. People are going to rob them. You know, as long as it's a locked facility, that's what the law says, it must be a locked facility and as long as they follow the rules, I see no problem with this.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions of council? Well, we have a motion and a support, so Sheriff Lynde, do you want to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Council members Pollocka-
Yes.
Hiana-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted. Good luck, folks. All right, we had two items removed from the consent agenda. The first one- Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, 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 that's right, we're on D. I don't want to go to E. I'm sorry, regular agenda item D is the consideration to purchase the EnviroSite portable sewer inspection system. And Lloyd, I hope you'll be reefer than the packet.
I will try. I want you to provide council all the information available. We do have a lengthy edition of the packet. The Department of Public Works is asking council's consideration for the purchase of a EnviroSite portable sewer inspection system through the National Joint Powers Alliance. The National Joint Powers Alliance is similar to my deal, which the city has used quite often. My deal did not have this item on its list, so we went national and, you know, there's obviously some advantage to going national because more prospective bidders would possibly, you know, submit bids for those items. Since, as council's aware, last year we had numerous homes that experienced some basement flooding, area of heavy rain events. Not all of those were contributed, caused by the city sewer system, primarily it was lateral lines that had root balls in them. As the DPW cleaned and jetted a great amount of the sewer system, we still were experiencing problems. We had to call a contractor in, cost was over $80,000. And so what we're suggesting is that, and it's included as part of our guidelines that have been developed since then, we're going to section the city off into three to five, depending upon the condition of the system as we get out there and inspect it. But the, what we're suggesting is to continue a trend that the Public Works Department has had in bringing contractors' work back in-house with existing staff as long as it makes sense. Now, we've been focusing on dollars and cents, but in this case it's more than dollars and cents because it will allow us to train our existing personnel to respond immediately around the clock to sewer backups. But more importantly than that, it will allow us to put the camera into the sewer main and pinpoint the location that's having a problem. As I explained when we were going through our basement flooding concerns, you know, typically how it's done, when you don't have a camera, is you go from one manhole to the other. With the addition of, you know, a camera that's basically a remote robot, and they're getting more and more sophisticated as time goes by, we can drop this into the manhole, find exactly where the location is, take care of the problem. And it doesn't necessarily have to be done, you know, on overtime, you know, you're not calling in contractors in for those additional costs that they're paying their employees, you know, high dollars for. And as we start this regular maintenance program with the sewer system, we expect those emergency calls to go down considerably. But it really is a big benefit for our community, being that we can conduct this work in-house, respond immediately. And also, the camera has a number of features, the ability to record, so that we can show homeowners, property owners, what the problems are. The camera is specialized in that, it has a swivel head, so we, some do not, but this one does. It allows us to turn and view up into the lateral line on the private property portion, although it's just a view from the main itself, it often will show those conditions that we experienced last year where there were root balls hanging out of the laterals and once you show that, then we can identify whose concern it is and what actions need to be taken. So we'd like council's consideration and approval of this item. I think you'll be very pleased with the work, particularly as we get further into our maintenance program and start entering into year two and year three and year four, the system will become much more reliable and we'll have far fewer backups.
All right. Questions of fact for Lloyd?
What is the life expectancy of this type of equipment?
We, Bell Equipment Company would be the local distributor and they have parts on hand. It's more of a modular unit. Some of the things that are unique about this particular unit, why we picked it, other units that are similar and priced higher will require anytime some of the cabling was broken to have it shipped to the facility and have it repaired. As part of what we're requesting and including in here is a repair kit that we can actually do it in field. And so we can stay in field, resolve the problem rather than, because they are very delicate pieces of equipment, that's why only certain staff members will be allowed to use this equipment until everybody's adequately trained and tested. But it would be expected to last anywhere between five and 10 years or greater, depending upon, you know, what components go bad. But for the most part, anything can be repaired and replaced. So there's obviously a cost to that, but it is, they're not a single unit that once it breaks, you throw it away. Each component can be repaired and replaced individually.
Okay. And are there any expected associated costs with having to operate this machine? Is it basically, you put it down the manhole and remote, turn it on and remote, you know, once you go through training, obviously?
Who said those video games as a kid wouldn't come in?
Greg wants to drive them.
I do.
That's for sure. Yeah, my kid could probably do this, you know, do the whole city in a day or two with the time he spent on those controllers, but yeah, that's exactly what it is. You know, there's a cable, there's a rear camera, a front camera, and there's some really neat labor-saving features built into the system where many of them, you have to remove the tractor and adjust it manually for the height of the pipe and the depth of the effluent that's in the pipe. This particular one, you can actually do it remotely. And so you can raise and lower the body of the camera itself to get outside of that flow and allow a better picture. There's just a tremendous amount of things that they can do now, you know, remote controlled and, you know, just like, you know, when you have an operation now, they can do it with a small camera. Well, it's basically the same thing except for on a bigger scale.
Yeah. I have a follow-up question to that. There's no software and just to install and update every year, that won't be an ongoing cost?
No, I don't believe so, no.
I just want to cover my base.
Talk a little bit about the training now. Who does it? How does it happen?
What will happen is, I mean, we will pick our people who are the most familiar with the system itself. We're going to test them on our guidelines, which are very explicit on how to conduct our program. And then what we'll do is we'll put them through a training process that will also involve the local distributor for as much time as necessary, but built in is a couple of days worth of training for the entire crew. Once we have people who are specialized, we'll continue like we have done with tree removal, concrete, road repair and that sort of thing. We will start spreading that knowledge out amongst the entire team. Initially, only a month ago, we hired a temporary employee who was a concrete and brick expert. Now, today, I can tell you, today alone, we had five different sites going with concrete replacement and sidewalk, because that knowledge was spread out amongst the crew and that's the whole goal. You know, we want to get this knowledge spread amongst the entire crew so that they can adapt to whatever situation is necessary regardless of which personnel are on site. And so we're going to, we're going to continue that trend. That's what we really are motivated to do and it's been very effective so far.
I have a really basic question, but is this a standard piece of equipment for DPWs? Are we like doing something really outside of the box here of purchasing this equipment or, or is this something that we're going to have and other cities would want to borrow and we could lease it out if not using it? I mean, can you give me some parameters of this? I don't know. Well, the intent here is that we're going to see a cost over time savings of bringing it in-house and buying this tool to do that, right? Which is ending the contracting. I don't see the cost benefit analysis over a period of time, but I would hope that we would be able to see that at some point to prove that the purchase of this tool was worthwhile, so.
That would definitely be something we would be interested in. Similar to the contractors that we hired last year, they don't just let you use the equipment, it's too delicate and specialized, but what they do is they let you rent the, and pay for the man-hours. We could certainly make that available, provided we aren't using it ourselves to other communities. I mean, it's certainly something we can consider.
And notice something too, that this tool is, while we needed it last year for reactive purposes, is actually more intense as to be preventative and measure. So it'll really help facilitate a comprehensive maintenance plan throughout the city.
Okay, so I just want to go back to my original question. Is this a standardized tool that most cities have?
Well, some do and some don't. You know, one of the things that, for Ferndale is that, you know, unfortunately our infrastructure is aging, so the need for this equipment is going to become greater and we will see more contractor costs if we don't purchase it because- costs if we don't purchase it because as some of the infrastructure approaches 50, 60, 70 years old, you're going to see more problems. And we're experiencing that even this year with all these additional sinkholes that we've had that haven't been in years past. So I think this piece of equipment will become very handy, very valuable, not just in the dollars that we'll save in contractor's costs, but the vast improvement in our abilities to help service the community.
To even go drill down further, is it like a plow chock? Where every city has one? No, but there are a lot that do and a lot that don't. It just depends on the nature of the team.
Can you sort of give an estimate? And I know it was put in the council packet at the time, but how much should we spend on contracting out that service for the reactive?
Last year was 80.
If I may. Last year alone, we spent over $80,000. Now, we had significant sewer flooding and corrected, because of the ability to hire a contractor with this equipment, we were able to correct that one area. Based on my review of the system as a whole, there are a number of areas that we need to get back into, and this will easily pay for itself within a couple of years based upon the need to hire contractors currently to get out there and start inspecting some of the systems. Not only will we be reacting to requests for service or backups, but will allow us to, in the past, we've paid considerable money for the engineers to come in and videotape the entire lengths of sewer mains. We will be doing that as part of our normal maintenance. And so we'll be able to grade our sewer mains, determine which ones are deteriorating, and try to help plan those improvement schedules and replacement schedules ahead of time. So there is a lot of that. Now, I won't exaggerate and tell you that the crew will come up to speed on this overnight. That's not going to happen. But solely but surely, whatever it takes, we'll get there.
But we need to hire a contractor to train our staff? Or is that part of this $100,000 purchase?
No, we'll be able to handle this.
What's that?
We will be able to handle this.
I heard Lloyd's son was going to do the training.
Part of the initial purchase, though, does include training days for people to use that equipment. And then, as he said before, what he's been doing is taking, like, leads, if you will, who are specializing in this. So the few employees that will be specialized will then start training the other employees. So kind of a train the trainer kind of thing.
If I may, though, I want to align expectations, and if this is not factual, tell me. When you start looking for trouble, you're going to find it. So while we will save on contractor costs, I would expect that we would increase to find this at least upfront in the short term, a larger number of issues before they become major issues, and thus our expenditures to fix them will go up. So there's a cause and effect here, right? So this is an expensive piece of equipment, but there's some expensive repairs that come with this, too.
The thing is, though, with sewer backups and sewer collapses and that sort of thing, it's pay me now or pay me later. And later's going to be more expensive because it's going to be based on an emergency basis. If, once we can get ahead of this problem, which will take a couple of years, but once we get ahead of this problem, that's not going to be the concern. And because we'll know the condition of the pipes, we'll be able to know which ones align before they collapse, and we'll also be able to identify, because what we'll do is similar to our sidewalk program. We're going to divide it, and we don't know the condition of the entire system at its current stage yet. But what will happen is we'll divide it like the sidewalk system into three to five-year programs. We'll begin in one section. If we find a section that's not very bad, then we'll expand it that year. If we find one that requires a lot of work, then we're going to have to adjust our schedule. But the goal is to be able to do the entire city every three to five years. And that's the recommended standard anyway, and we'll be able to meet those standards.
And to piggyback off of Councilman Martin's comments, you and I have had several conversations about service line programs. And I know you're still investigating a lot of that information. But I would hope with this program that we would be able to identify residents who may be having an issue. They might not have an issue now, but we should be able to be proactive with our residents in saying, you know, send them out a letter. You need to be aware, we've identified roots coming out.
Absolutely. Even though it's not the city's responsibility, it's considered private property by ordinance, there's still a lot to be said, too. Because what hap, I mean, we've explained a lot of this before, and I don't want to get too technical. But what happens is that sometimes the homeowners aren't aware of it. If there's not heavy use in the house, it's not backing up. But the first time you get a heavy rain, or you have a number of people in your house, now you're going to have a problem because the blockage that's there is going to back up into the pipe, whereas if you just have light usage, it may stay in the pipe and seep out into the main. So this will allow us, at least from the main, the sewer main point of view, you'll be able to see the connection, look at it, and say, okay, he's got a root ball hanging out. Let's notify him that his line has got a problem. And often, too, the line will separate at the sewer main, which is still the property owner's responsibility. If we see that, we can also notify them. And that is part of the requirement of the crew to do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But I think it is fair to say, though, that this is a cause and effect, and it's a preventative measure, but it will, wouldn't surprise me to see the expenditures in maintenance go up because of this program. But at the end of the day, obviously, we all know the value of that. But it is very true.
What is the balance of this fund? Do we know? Repair and maintenance, is this where these kinds of expenditures would be coming from?
This was built into the current budget. It's part of the current budget. The overall balance for the fund is significant.
Yeah, we have a fund, I mean, we would, you would use, again, fund balance as a part if we have to do increased maintenance for next year or things like that. That's part of what the balance is used for, is again, too, if we find a main that needs to be lined or things of that nature, that's which is capital. But the money was budgeted.
So we don't, because I don't recall, the budget hearings were months ago. So we don't necessarily reserve the funds in this fund? We just supplement it from the general fund?
At least this time, we've allocated on a budget basis.
It was budgeted during the budget process, but yes, if you were to, let's just say this was unexpected expenditure, you could take it out of the water and sewer fund balance, if you will. But we did budget for it.
Probably ready for a motion?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of an EnviroSite portable sewer inspection system from Bell Equipment at a cost of $101,892, and that the expense be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund Repair and Maintenance 592-000-775.
I support.
Moved by Pollica and supported by Piana. All right. Other comments or questions, thoughts?
I appreciate you looking out for helping save the city money long-term, even though we'll probably spend more on repairs, but less on emergency repairs.
Right. But it's good to be proactive, especially after last year, how reactive we, by nature, were forced to be.
Better to make the repair before we're knee-deep in water.
That's right.
Literally.
No pun. All right. Sherlyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is approved. All right, now, moving on to what we'll call regular agenda item E, which also happened to be consent agenda item E, which is the dues to the Woodward Avenue Action Association. And Councilwoman Piana, you pull that item.
I'll be quick. I recommend that we bring in the WA3 to do an annual presentation. I'm a little concerned about their financial position and how they're helping the city of Ferndale and their resident and their other communities along the corridor. So just wanted to say that.
I would appreciate that as well. I wanted to know what the WA3 has done for us this year.
For clarity, are you saying withhold the dues until they make the presentation?
I think it's important for the city to continue to support them, but I want to know where they're going for the next year. So to me, this is a one-year, you know, grace period to see where they're going.
So don't withhold the dues this year?
Don't withhold the dues here. But I am expressing concern.
Yeah, I understand. And they are re, you know, just to piggyback on that, they are reinventing themselves, if you will, a little bit like Eight Mile Boulevard Association did as well. But I think it would be great to have them. They haven't been here in a while.
And they have a new interim director?
They do, yeah. So I have no problem with inviting them to, invite them to one of the August meetings, if that's okay.
So I will move to approve the dues for the Woodward Avenue Action. There's an A missing here. It says Woodward Action Association. Woodward Avenue Action Association, sold in $3,125 and be taken from account as stated.
Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Other comments or questions about that item? All right, Sherlyn.
Councilmembers Pollica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is approved. And finally, our last item is agenda item seven, which is the approval of software as a service agreement with the Active Network for a one-time project cost of $17,700 and ongoing cost not to exceed 2.5% of annual registration sales to be charged to the Coolack Community Center. And Councilwoman Piana, you also pulled that item.
I'm very supportive of this, but I have a concern I want to express to staff to make sure that it's covered in the contract with Active Network. So I've been using Active Network for a lot of the running 5K events, and I recently signed up for the 5K run for the Rainbow Run. And when I was using their Active Network in registration, I did not unclick, I wanted to be an active member. And I got charged $65 to my credit card because I did not see, you have to unclick it to not become a member, to get this on your charge when you're registering for events. So I want to make sure that that is not allowed as part of our account with Active Network for Ferndale residents or whoever signs up for our events.
I will confirm that with the Active Network, but my understanding is that the Active interface is for, it's different. That's their commercial public interface, and this is for a governmental entity interface, where they can't make that offer and they can't appeal that offer.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
But I will make sure. I will clarify that before.
Okay, because I don't want people calling me saying cities charging people for membership they never asked for. So I move to approve of the software as a service agreement with the Active Network for a one-time project cost of $17,700 and ongoing cost not to exceed 2.5% of annual registration sales to be withdrawn from the Coolack Community Center account number as stated.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by Pollica. Any other comments or questions? Sherlyn, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollica?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, folks. Our next item of business would be call to council. The fire chief has been patiently sitting through this meeting. Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Lieutenant, filling in for our chief, anything for the good of the community from the police department?
I have an inquiry.
All right, thank you, sir. Derek, anything else from community and economic development?
I think I've got enough time tonight.
All right. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
I just wanted to provide a really brief overview or update on our health and wellness clinic. We have begun meeting weekly to, we're in the implementation phase, working very closely with CARE here, also working with Madison Heights this week. They expect to have their plans approved to begin construction on the facility itself. And we anticipate the clinic opening prior to January 1.
Nice.
So, thank you.
Excellent, great. Jill, anything for the recreation department this evening?
Good evening. I just wanted to give council a couple of updates on the agenda item that you just approved, our agreement with Active Network, just a couple of the key benefits coming to our residents. Our customers now, with switching over to Active, one of the key things, their website is now mobile-ready. Residents will be able to register for programs, reserve a facility, renew their fitness membership, all from either their smartphone or their tablet. With their system being web-based, this also gives our staff an opportunity to offer onsite registration. As you know, over the past several years, we've reduced staffing hours and we're from the office, and we have more staff hours dedicated to programming, so more staff out at programs. So we have the potential now to take registrations onsite. And our, some benefits for our class instructors, they'll be able to log in, they'll be able to access their class rosters themselves, be able to take attendance, track their attendance, which I think is great. Our youth league coaches and our adult softball managers will be able to create team accounts, they'll be able to enter their scores themselves, view their team schedules. Another key benefit is Oak Park, which we currently have an interlocal agreement with, and we do a lot of joint programming, they recently switched to Active as well. So there's a lot of opportunity to share rosters and automatically, so we'd be able to, new programs that are running jointly, we'd be able to send automatic updates on registration information, schedules, that sort of thing. So we're looking forward to it. Should take roughly the rollout three to four months, so we'll have updates as they become available on what that'll look like for everybody. But hopefully, late fall to early winter, should be up and running. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Joe, anything else from your?
Something from your end.
All right. Michelle, anything else? All right. Lloyd, anything else from DPW this evening? No? All right. Sherlyn, anything? I think there's something going on with you this week.
What is that? Okay, a week from tomorrow, please get out and vote, August 5. Polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. It is also not too late to get an absentee ballot. If you need one, contact the clerk's office. We will be open this Friday and on Saturday from 9:00 until 2:00 to process absent voter ballots. Please vote.
Yes, thank you. April, anything for the city manager's office?
Nothing tonight, honor.
No. Fan, anything from an legal perspective?
Nothing, my dear.
No. Mayor, please, Tom Martin?
Two things. Please vote. Always critical, and I know we're all passionate about that. I am also pleased to report that the Arts and Culture Commission had its first very successful event this year. Music in the Park was at Coolack Center last week. We had a turnout of about 75 individuals. Kudos to the Arts and Culture team. They also used volunteers from the senior group at Coolack, and Jill was there on hand to help out. And it was, so it was a great event. The music was fantastic, and it was very well-received. And there were a boatload of dogs running around the park, too. So it was a family-friendly, dog-friendly event. The next one is on August 22 from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. So put it on your calendars. It's a great time.
Excellent. Councilman Pollica?
The only thing I did want to mention is to acknowledge the lady, the resident from West Saratoga and the gentleman from West Maplehurst and their parking and traffic issue. And as being someone who lives in the downtown core on East Saratoga, I understand their frustrations with traffic and lack of parking, and we are trying to address those problems. And that's really all I can say. You know, I have to live with the same things that they live with.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
I have two announcements. The first is that the Dales Group is having its second annual block group party on Saturday, August 9, from 12:00 to 3:00. And I invite city council and staff and anybody who lives in the Dales, which is from Woodward to Livernoy and West Marshall. So a very large neighborhood group, yes. And it's a potluck. It's bring your own food, bring your own drinks, non-alcoholic, because it's in Oppenheim Park. And there will be the fire truck for the kids to play in. We're hoping to have an inflatable bouncy house that's in the works. Of course, there's also going to be the play equipment there, and we're going to have a neighborhood tiki band out playing in the park for everybody to come enjoy. So come out. This is Saturday, August 9, from 12:00 to 3:00 for the Dales Group Neighborhood Block Club Party.
Perhaps the sewer robot will be ready by then?
Yes. Do your sewer club bike ride in the morning, then come out and bring some food to share at the potluck and meet your neighbors. And then the other one is, of course, just wanted to direct people to learn about one of their ballot measures on August 5, which is the Smart Village ballot proposal. of their ballot measures on August 5th, which is the SmartMillage ballot proposal, and you can go to keepsmartrolling.com to learn why investing in our current bus system is important to building a stronger regional transit system. And I'm pretty excited, that M1 streetcar broke ground today and should be up and running in sixteen months, and hopefully by then, we'll have done engineering for the Bus Rapid Transit System, and maybe we'll be moving forward, literally, on some funding to actually build the Bus Rapid Transit System, so. But that, and that's it.
Excellent. Just a couple of things, I will reiterate that there is an election on Tuesday, and it's an important election, and unfortunately, Dennis Hopner is not here to eloquently tell us the importance of voting, and I'm not even gonna try, but I want to remind our residents, we have an active state rep and an active state senate campaign going on. There are two proposals, proposal one, which would potentially replace lost revenues from the personal property tax and the SmartMillage. Your council has unanimously endorsed both of those for what that's worth, but take your, your own pulse and read up on them, and please make sure to vote on those. And then the other thing I want to do is just, Mary Schusterbauer mentioned earlier about the civility pledge that we all took, and specifically how it relates to the 360 Project. And I want to say that, I want to reiterate what she said, there's a lot of passion and a lot of discussion that's been had about a potential 360 Project. I really appreciate all the residents and business owners' questions and concerns and comments about that, and I want you to continue to express those. Go to our website or go to the DDA's website, because we're still encouraging you to express